Thank you. Good evening, this is the meeting of the Select Board for Wednesday, December 8th, 2021. This meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. My name is Katie Conlon, I'm the Chair of the Board, could the Board members introduce themselves, please?
Arthur Doyle, Vice Chair.
Mike Zulis, Secretary.
Melinda Collins, Member.
Richard Wells, Member.
Thank you all, we're also joined by our Town Administrator, Mr. Dennehy, Lyndon Appleby at the Select Board Office, and two Members of Town Council's Office. We're going to start tonight an executive session, and our hope is that the executive session won't take more than about a half hour. So I'm going to move that we enter executive session for three purposes, all relating to litigation strategy.
Second.
Let me just finish the motion. We're entering executive session to discuss litigation strategy with respect to, number one, potential litigation against the MBTA related to the condition of the stairs at the MBTA train station located at Adams Street. Second, litigation strategy with respect to the national litigation settlement. And number three, with respect to potential litigation against the Secretary of the Commonwealth relative to the new congressional and state representative districts. Yeah, in each case, believing that having such discussion, an open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Board, and we will be returning to open session to take up our full agenda. And Mr. Wells, you're seconding that motion?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, second.
Thank you, so this is a roll call vote, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes, okay, so we're now in executive session, and for the benefit of all of those who are watching or in the attendee group, we hope to be back in about a half hour, in open session. All right, it is now 8:02 PM, and this is a Select Board meeting on December 8th, we are back in open session, we had some technical difficulties, so we are going to return to executive session at the very end of our meeting for one item. But we are now back in open session, so we're going to start with our full agenda, and I think we should reintroduce ourselves. My name is Katie Conlon, I'm the Chair.
Arthur Doyle, Vice Chair.
Mike Zulis, Secretary.
Melinda Collins, Member.
Richard Wells, Member.
And we're joined by Town Administrator Michael Dennehy and Lyndon Appleby at the Select Board Office, and also by Superintendent James Jet. First, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we can put up our flag on the screen, if everyone would join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States and America
And to the republic for which it stands One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Thank you, everyone. And we'll take our photo down. Okay, the first item in the open session agenda, we added a brief item so that we can respond to some recent incidents that involved sadly conduct that was racist to nature in the Milton Public Schools, and Superintendent Jet has joined us. I know there was another incident in the schools this morning that was unfortunate and turned out to be a false alarm, but this agenda item was really placed for events that happened, and I believe in the last week or perhaps the last two weeks. And it's an opportunity for our Board to comment on them, but since we have Superintendent Jet, I'd like to maybe go to Superintendent first, and then I thought what I would read at the end of our discussion is the "No Place for Hate" proclamation that the Board always issues every January when we attend the Martin Luther King Jr. event. But why don't we go to the Superintendent first, Superintendent Jet, thank you for coming in this evening, and we know you have an awful lot on your plate, and these recent incidents have only added more pressure and more things to deal with sadly. So please, thank you for coming in, and feel free to address the Board.
Well, first and foremost, thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity to come. Yes, it's been a couple of, a tough week and a half, I would say, but I wanted to take this opportunity to share with your Board what transpired and how we got to the point where we are today. The first incident that we had did not happen in Milton Public Schools, did not happen on school time or school property. Unfortunately, it was in the home, something was said, and it was recorded without the person's knowledge of being recorded, and it happened to be uploaded and shared. Unfortunately, it was a racial comment, and, but the context was, it was a young student responding to a seven-year-old person in another home. I can share that with you without sharing the names, and unfortunately it got shared. And naturally, it upset people, and some of the students were aware of it, it spilled over in school. We dealt with that within less than 24 hours, it came to my attention at 4:24 on Tuesday, the 30th, and we were able to meet with families, the administration families, early in the morning. And that situation was dealt with. And then on Thursday, 3:51 PM, we got another situation where someone had written something in the bathroom using a very, this exact same slur with a couple of other things, and I won't go into that because that's still part of a police investigation, and it's still going on. And unfortunately, I can't say that we dealt with that individual, individuals, because that individual or individuals have not been identified yet. However, I did have an opportunity last night to address the past middle school families. I also had a coffee hour today at 12 o'clock noon, and for anyone to have any questions, we were able to dispel a lot of rumors or innuendos, but without a doubt, the comment in comments definitely had an impact on our entire community, and particularly our Black and Brown students. But I want to be clear, as I said several times, I've been in this community, I think Milton is a great community. Unfortunately, unfortunately, these things happen, they're not acceptable, but how we respond to it is what's important, and how we communicate with our community is what's important. So I've wanted to provide the context of the first situation, I can't give you more about the context of the second situation, because we had not had the opportunity, or at least I had not had the opportunity, to have a direct conversation with anyone, because we don't have anyone who's come for it, or anyone that either admitted to it, or were caught to do that. So those are the situations, we did address all of our faculty and staff at the Pierce for Monday morning. We also addressed every single grade level there. I will caution people, if there's a question, because I've already heard some concerns about those assemblies, if there's a question, I just simply ask people to pick up the phone and give a call. I wouldn't want people to go to Facebook or any social media to get their source of information, because that is detrimental, not only to the case itself, but it's detrimental to the community as a whole. I just don't, I can't respond to something that I don't know is out there. I'm not on any social media pages in the town of Milton, so I wouldn't know the speculation, innuendos, or statements that are out there. And quite frankly, we're updating the folks, we're providing opportunities for people to log on and listen to us directly. The people who have the knowledge of the incident in their hands are those in the Milton Public Schools, as far as we know. So I would encourage people to ask, and it would save individuals, communities, a lot of aggravation. So we're supporting our students who are impacted by it, but I also want to remind folks, we're talking about middle school students, and we also have to support the students who made a mistake. And I don't look at condemning students the age of 13, we have to work with students and hopefully instill in them the impact of their statement and how it had an impact on our community. So those are my comments at this time, and I thank you for afforded me that opportunity, if anyone had any questions, I'd be willing to happen to answer what I'm able to answer.
Thank you, Superintendent, does anyone have a question or a comment? Superintendent or General? Mr. Wells?
Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Jet, for joining us tonight. As you know, we have, we've worked in many of these, sadly, in cases like this in the past, in different roles for both of us, and I want to say publicly that I support you 100% in what you are doing here, and what you are trying to do for the students, in the environment that you try to perpetuate for them each and every day. And I support you too, Madam Chair, with, I think it would probably be smarter of us to reread the "No Place for Hate" thing, and then I would be cautious as to what else we may say. Additionally to this, as you just noted, Mr. Jet, and I had asked this question to Mr. Dennehy yesterday, if there could potentially be charges in either of these cases, I just don't want to impact those prematurely, that's all. I think you know where I'm at on this, and you know that I support you 100% of what you're doing, it's a complex world, and sometimes people just don't understand where these things come from. And, and what you're talking about is real life, not Facebook life, not Twitter life, not TikTok life, real life, and bang in there, keep doing what you're doing, for students at this time.
And thank you, Madam Chair, if I could just expand on Mr. Wells' comments. That is a very good point, when we're dealing with mine, is student discipline record in situations and sharing of information, and I understand the hunger and the thirst for the information, and sometimes the vagueness of any communication leads to speculation and innuendos. So I do appreciate all that folks have, all the folks that got that. And I have said to the community that we're on the call last night, we understand it's difficult, but I appreciate that, hopefully they understand that we do have to protect people's identity. Obviously, some people know who people are, the people involved, because there was a video circulating that I can't control, but it's not my job to go out public and share that. So thank you all for that. And if I could take one second to publicly thank, and I know it wasn't on the agenda, thank Milton Police for their rapid response to today's lockdown situation, I think you alluded to that, we're very fortunate that nothing happened. Milton Police responded in great force, and I know some people might feel it was excessive, but given all that you're seeing play out over the, around the country, I believe it was more than 30 of these type of events in schools around the country since the start of the school year, more than that. We have to take those very seriously, unfortunately, we have to respond as quickly as possible, make sure people are safe. I commend the student for speaking up, because it did look awkward. I feel badly for the faculty and staff member that was the person that was identified, and I thank the teacher who reported it to the administration. But mainly, the partnership, and for those who don't know, we have a great collaboration with Milton Police, and we have for many, many years practiced in these drills, going through them, revising our security policies and protocols, and we continue to do that. It was a matter of 27 minutes in total, 8:55 to 9:22. Some parents were a little perplexed by why they got the call from, or text from the kids before we do. That's the times we're in, soon as they say lockdown, kids go in and they grab their phone and text, they're going to get it faster than we do, because when we lock down, the principal, guidance, assistant principals, students, everyone has to lock down to make sure they're safe, especially when there's concerns about a fire, I'm in the building. So I do want to thank people for their understanding, it's not something that we'd like to put out, but I'd rather err on the side of caution and protect all of the people in the building as best we can. So I thank you guys for you, and I yield my time speaking at this point, thank you.
Do anyone else on the Board comments? Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, if I may, just very quickly, I do want to thank the Superintendent and the leadership team in the school administration for all their efforts to respond to this and the continued response. It's, this is not just a one-shot response, this is an ongoing process. Fortunately, these incidents reflect and represent the ugly side of our culture, and all of us have a responsibility to confront that ugliness directly and doggedly and unambiguously, and I think the School Department, led by Superintendent, is doing that, and for that, for that I thank him. And, you know, I'll just, I'll just leave you with what my student said, and which was that, you know, they've had a lot of challenges in the last week and a half, but she said if we all work together, that we'd be all right, so, thank you, Superintendent Jet.
Anyone else? Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just add a well done to all parties, both internal and external to the Milton Public School, thank you.
I agree with all of the comments, I think the best thing we, we as a Select Board can do is to support the efforts of the Superintendent and the School Committee to really try to address these issues on a systemic basis. And so, I mean, as the Board's indulged as well, I just read our "No Place for Hate" proclamation, and again, this is something that we typically deliver at the Martin Luther King Jr. event every January, but in circumstances like this, I think it appears repeating, and it's good for students and parents to hear. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas all acts of subtle and overt racism, anti-Semitism, homophobia, and ethnic bigotry substantially undermine our communities, schools, and the promise of equal justice; whereas our nation was founded on the fundamental conviction that all persons are entitled to equal protection, equal opportunity, and to the enjoyment of civil rights; and whereas the strength of our nation is derived from the growing diversity of our communities; and whereas the Anti-Defamation League, Massachusetts Municipal Association, and other coalition members sponsor programs designed to help communities develop and take specific actions to combat bias and promote respect for people; and whereas the Town of Milton has committed to fulfill the criteria to be declared 'No Place for Hate' and whereas we can begin to solve the problem of hate and to build bridges to different communities only by taking strategic and specific actions to promote a sense of welcome and inclusion. Now therefore, we, the Select Board, hereby proclaim that Milton will maintain a policy of zero tolerance for hate crimes, and will do our best to interrupt prejudice and stop those who, because of hate, would hurt, harass, or violate the civil rights of anyone. We also pledge ourselves to undertake a serious year-round program to mobilize key leadership segments in our community to creatively address any issues that will promote a recognition and encouragement of diversity. We encourage all residents of Milton to take cognizance of this proclamation and to participate fittingly in its observance." So that's our annual proclamation, and hopefully, this can be a learning experience for the students, but also parents and the community as a whole. I see that Mr. Doyle's hand is raised.
Madam Chair, although annual, would you want a motion to reaffirm the proclamation at this time, under these circumstances?
A second of this motion.
Okay, we'll entertain that motion, Mr. Wells is second to the motion.
I was just going to add that it be communicated, maybe the Superintendent on his side, students, parents, just to know, broadly throughout the community, the Select Board is with you.
Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do want to note something that I heard Superintendent Jet say, which I think was very wise, that mercy is also in order, and that what we're, what we're looking for as a community is restorative justice, so that there's healing, and, and as you said, Madam Chair, you know, a learning for the person or people who, you know, did this really very sad and destructive thing, so, thank you. I really appreciate your coming here, Superintendent Jet, because you, you have had a difficult week and a half or so, in addition to everything else that's going on, so thank you.
So we have a motion that's made and seconded, why don't we date the, if we vote to approve this, why don't we date it as of today? And let's Lyndon Appleby to attach our signatures to the proclamation, and why don't we put it up on the website, we can put it on the Select Board page, we can send a copy over to the Superintendent tomorrow, and the school, if the School Department wants to publish it as well, or mention it at the School Committee meeting, they certainly welcome to do that. Okay, if we have no other discussion on the motion, hearing none, I will go to a vote, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon, yes. All right, thank you Superintendent Jeff for joining us this evening, I'm sorry we were later than we thought we would be, but...
Not a problem, and on behalf of the entire district, especially the teachers that were in those rooms, they deserve the real credit with the students, along with MPD, but I thank you guys for your support, and I thank you guys for your recently voted proclamation, and we look forward to a strong partnership moving forward. All right, setback is nothing but a setup for a comeback, there we go, you guys have a good night.
Thank you, Superintendent, you as well.
Good night, take care.
Okay, thank you all, now we're onto public comment. Do we, we have several people in the attendee group, do we have anyone this evening for public comment? If so, please raise your hand, or if you're on the telephone, please start six to unmute. Actually, I don't see anyone on the telephone lines. The first, first speaker is Deborah Felton, so let's move, we've already, Deborah Felton up to panelist, good evening, Deborah.
Hello, Chair Conlon, and the Select Board. I, I wanted to speak about COVID, and then I'll speak about the proclamation. We are up in Milton, and I haven't seen the latest that are posted tonight, I couldn't find them, but we're up from 2.12 to 2.37 in positivity rate. The state of Massachusetts has 85% of Milton residents has received at least one dose of the vaccine. In Milton, only 71% of Milton residents have received at least one dose. I don't, I don't believe that we, as a community, should be satisfied with that. I would like to see the Select Board behind some education of town employees who aren't vaccinated and residents. As we all know, we've lost at least one person who was active in town government to COVID, and I'm sure there are many other people that have died because of COVID, and I feel that the town needs to be more proactive in this regard. I went before the Board of Health, and I think we need a mask mandate right now to get us through until we really understand what this new variant is, and to keep the public safe. So I would appreciate it if the Board could help in education of all town residents and in, I know when I came before about having a mask mandate, I know that the Board did take some leadership in working with the Board of Health on this, and I think it's time to do it again during the holidays. As to the "No Place for Hate" proclamation, I think it's wonderful that you reaffirmed this, but this is only a document, and until we make it really a living, active document, it's not worth it, anything. And, you know, a lot of us in the community have spent a lot of time working on issues of "No Place for Hate", I will be reaching out to Superintendent Jet, because we did fund and do a lot of different programs, especially in the middle school, when the "No Place for Hate" committee was active. So I'm hoping that we can not only school parents, but there are many, many people in the community who are committed to having a "No Place for Hate" community, so thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Felton. Do we have anyone else this evening for citizen speak? If so, please raise your hand. We'll wait another 10 or 15 seconds, if you'd like to speak to the Board, please raise your hand, and we will be happy to recognize you. I don't see any hands raised. Actually, we have Ms. Clark, Jill Clark?
Good evening, Chair Conlon and Select Board Members, my name is Jill Clark, I'm a Town Meeting Member in Precinct Four. I live half a block from the new line that runs right through District Four. I know this is on the agenda tonight, and I'm interested to hear about how any potential redistricting will affect current Town Meeting Members as well as future Town Meeting Members.
Okay, and could you give us your street address for the, for the minutes, please?
Absolutely, 26 Harold Street.
Thank you, okay, this is on our agenda, and so thank you for that question, we will see if we can... That will probably be a brief discussion, because the Town Corp was in at one of our previous meetings with a little bit more information on that, but we will get to that later on this evening, thank you. Okay, Senator Walter Timmeltie? Good evening, Senator?
Good evening, Madam Chair, thank you very much, and good greetings to the Board, happy holidays to all, thank you very much. Just if I may, Madam Chair, I'd like to offer the Board a quick legislative update.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will be very brief, because I know you have pressing matters at hand, but thank you very much for this opportunity to brief the Board and obviously everybody who is tuning in tonight. Quick, to start off, to touch base on home rule petitions, Senate Bill 1364, which is an act authorizing certain investments by the Treasurer of the Town of Milton, it's sometimes been referred to as the prudent investor rule. It will allow Treasurer McAuliffe, who does an outstanding job, in my opinion, to be nimble in terms of the town's investments in conjunction with the council that the town retains for investment advice. This was signed into law, passed both the Senate, I filed it, Senator, in the Senate and in the House, Representative Bill Driscoll and Representative Brandy Fluker Oakley signed on as cosponsors. I secured its passage in the Senate, Rep. Driscoll and Rep. Fluker Oakley secured passage in the House, and Governor Baker signed this bill into law on October 12th, 2021, and it is Chapter 60 of the Acts of 2021. Senate Bill 2526, which is an act relative to raising the income threshold for senior real property tax deferments in the Town of Milton, again, a home rule petition. Upon receiving the paperwork from the Town of Milton, I filed the bill and sent Representative Bill Driscoll, Representative Fluker Oakley, signed on as cosponsors. The bill was given a hearing on October 18th, 2021 by the Joint Committee on Revenue. I testified on that, at that hearing in behalf of the bill, and I had a meeting yesterday with the, one of the co-chairs of the committee, urging its favorable passage from the committee. I believe that it will receive a favorable report in the weeks ahead, and then I will secure its passage through the State Senate. And with that, also, there is special legislation that we have been in collaboration with the Board regarding our Town Administrator position. Currently, I am awaiting draft bill language from the Select Board, and obviously, that's a very painstaking and very important drafting of the document, so when that is ready to go, both myself and Rep. Driscoll and Rep. Fluker Oakley will be ready to work on it in both the House and the Senate. Now shifting gears for a moment to the American Recovery Act, the commonly referred to as APA funding. Back in the month of November, we addressed this in the State Senate Chamber, and I filed an amendment seeking $50,000 for improvements to Brooks Field Infrastructure. That amendment was successfully adopted, it went to a conference committee, which is the group of legislators, three members from the House, three members of the Senate, who reconciled the two documents between the House and Senate. It has survived conference committee, and currently, with the whole conference committee report regarding APA funding remains with Governor Baker. It was delivered to Governor Baker's office on December 3rd. The Governor has 10 business days, not including the day in which he received the bill, and Saturdays and Sundays and holidays to vet it, sign, use his line item veto, or veto the whole measure, which I'm sure the Governor will not do. In any event, it has survived the conference committee, and is on the Governor's desk, along with an amendment that I filed in the State Senate deliberations for $68,000 for the Milton Council on Aging. These funds will go towards enhancing programming for our seniors at the Council on Aging, Christine Stanton does a great job there, and her team does a wonderful job, it will also enhance staffing levels at the Milton Council on Aging, and I'd like to thank Mr. Zulus for your collaboration on these suggestions. Also, I filed an amendment that was successfully adopted, seeking $30,000 for our Milton Health Department. As we're all well aware, Public Health Director Caroline Cancela does a great job, and this will go towards funding, in its entirety, a community health assessment for the Town of Milton, which we all believe is very important. I also filed an amendment that was successfully adopted in the Senate APA debate, seeking $80,000 for the Milton Public Schools. These funds, and this amendment was successfully adopted, as I mentioned, these funds will go towards improving and upgrading the HVAC systems in the Milton Public Schools. These funds will go towards improving and upgrading the HVAC systems in the Milton Public Schools. Obviously, that has been impressed upon all of us, how important our HVA systems, AC systems are in all our public buildings. And this will get us started in terms of the cost. I believe the overall cost is $350,000. So I believe this will help and obviously I and my colleagues in the Milton delegation will keep on paying attention to these options and opportunities. And finally, I filed an amendment in the Senate APOF debate, which was successfully adopted, which obtained $5,000 for the Milton Community Food Pantry, $5,000 for the Concord Baptist Church Food Pantry and $5,000 for the Unquity House Corporation Food Pantry. And we all sadly so. Food insecurity has risen dramatically all around the country during the pandemic, particularly so in Norfolk County, particularly so in Norfolk County, which is a micro cause, in my belief, of the whole Commonwealth. So I believe this is incredibly important. Our food pantries do great work and this will help them somewhat. Obviously, it's a constant struggle to battle food insecurity, but I believe this will help. And that, Madam Chair, is my brief update for tonight. I thank you for this opportunity and more than happy to answer any questions that our select board may have for myself. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Does anyone have any questions for the Senator? We don't usually ask questions during citizen speak, but if someone would has a question, please feel free. Given that this is a legislative update.
All good news, Madam Chair.
Yes, it is. All good news. All right, here, hearing no questions on Senator, thank you very much for joining us.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you to each and every member of the board and town administrator. Thank you so much for the collaboration and the cooperation in all we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good night.
We have one other hand raised for citizen speak. Starts with the word scoop. It's an email address. I won't read the whole email address. Yes, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarnia Etienne Dupie. I live at 84 Blue Hills Parkway in Milton, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
And my email address is scoop dupie at Yahoo.
You don't you don't need to give us that. I don't want you to, this, the meeting is being recorded, so thank you. We just need your address.
Okay. First of all, I just wanted to thank the board for taking the time to have this meeting. It's so important. I have been a resident of Milton, Massachusetts since 1977. I actually was born in this house. And I went to the Milton Public Schools. My daughter is attending school at Milton as well. I, my husband and I have a business here in Milton. And we were adversely affected by COVID-19, as I'm sure many other people were. I had the opportunity to read on the town paper that there was going to be an opportunity for business owners, minority business owners such as myself, to apply for grants. And I wanted to be able to plead my case and to ask and see whether or not I'm going to be a successful candidate. As I said, I've been a member, I've been a resident of the town of Milton since 1977. My husband and I have a electrical company, electrical contracting company. And at the beginning of the pandemic, towards the end of 2019, we were doing fairly well, actually quite well. And and around February of 2020, things began to get difficult. People were shutting down. By March, everything decided to shut down completely. However, we still had to have, we had still have rental payments to do. We still had employees that we had not officially laid off at the time that we had to keep up with payroll, utilities. And then as this, as the Commonwealth shut down entirely, we had to lay off our employees. We weren't able to get work because, of course, customers were afraid to allow people into their homes. And for about a year, my husband was trying to work by himself until he himself contracted COVID and has spent several months in many ways is still recovering from the after effects of the disease. We are severely behind in our expenses. We are working hard to continue to maintain. We have been able to hire one other person to come back on, but we're not fully staffed yet. And any assistance that we'd be able to get would be appreciated. But even if we can't get the assistance, I do want to thank you for at least proposing the opportunity for businesses or people such as myself to be able to have an opportunity to get a leg up. It's been a difficult process for everyone, but we truly appreciate the fact that this is something that the town of Milton is doing. It's an important thing and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much for for coming to public comment. And we'll speak a little more about this when we get to the APOF item on our agenda. But our finance committee is vetting all the requests and applications. And that may be the appropriate forum. I know we've had a couple of inquiries regarding aid to businesses that were impacted by COVID. So so thank you very much for coming into the meeting this evening. I don't see any other hands raised and I think it's time for us now to go on to our next agenda item. So the next agenda item is a brief update on the holiday stroll. We wanted to put this near the top of the agenda just to get the word out. And the holiday stroll that the Chamber of Commerce has organized is taking place this Saturday, December 11th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. The main event will be in East Milton Square where there will be a stroll. The businesses, I believe all of the local businesses are going to be participating. They're going to have a DJ playing holiday music. There will be holiday treats and the businesses are welcoming residents and families and young children to come in and visit each of the businesses. It's the activities are not only going to be in the square from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. At Steel and Rye, they will have make your own smores. And the Forbes House in the Eustace State already had events planned related to holiday crafts. And there are fees associated with the Forbes event and the Eustace event, but they've opened this up to the anyone participating in the holiday stroll. Although there is a fee, this is not going to be part of the Chamber of Commerce's program. It's all going to wind up at 5:00 p.m. with the lighting at the Milton Arts Center, 334 Edge Hill Road, where the tree will be lit and there'll be some festivities and caroling and also pictures with Santa Claus. So the Chamber of Commerce has really worked hard to put this program together. We all know there's a lot of construction in East Milton Square right now, so it's a challenging place to have the stroll. But they've, Joe Perlevecchio and his colleagues at the Chamber in particular have very generously and dedicated a lot of time putting this program together. They are having a raffle, so if you visit some of the participating businesses in Milton this week, there's a red ticket raffle that you can take part in. And the raffle will be drawn after the stroll at a later date. We should also thank Eagle Farm, which has donated a tree for the tree lighting and the Milton Public Works Department, which is helping to make this event possible. Mr. Dennehy, is there anything else that we should add about the stroll?
No, I think that's everything. You know, hopefully we'll have a couple of winter snowflakes falling, although the temperature looks to be on the warmer side. But no, great, great work by everyone. You had stressed the work that Mr. Pavalecchio and Chamber Commerce has put together, understanding this is a volunteer group and the collaboration between Eagle Farms coming up with the tree and Public Quirks folks helping and consolidating facilities, folks and the folks at the Milton Arts Center as well for their hospitality.
Anyone anything else on the stroll? We just wanted to help the Chamber publicize this event. Okay, then we're on to item nine, which is litigation. This relates to the National Opium Litigation Settlement. We met in executive session earlier. I am going to recuse myself from this agenda item as I have in the past. So I'll ask Mr. Doyle to serve as the chair for this item. Thank you to Mr. Doyle. You're muted, Arthur.
Thank you, Michael. During executive session with the chair, recused as she said, the select board approved legal counsel to pursue litigation strategy with respect to the National Opium Litigation Settlement regarding McKesson, Caiden Health, Indomara Source, Bergen and Jensen Pharmaceuticals Incorporated, Johnson and Johnson, and to authorize town administrator Mr. Dennehy to act on behalf of the town of Milton. Any further comment by any other members of the select board? Being none, let's invite Chair Conlon to return to the meeting.
Hey, thanks very much, Mr. Doyle. Item 10 on our agenda is an update and discussion regarding the congressional and state representative districts. And we had a question, citizen speaker, related to this. I think Susan Galvin, our town court, is still with us. So we'll invite Susan to join us. Good evening, Town Clerk Galvin. Thank you for coming back.
Oh, good evening. Thank you for having me.
This is a follow up to a discussion that we had at our last meeting. And why don't I ask the town clerk if she'd like to give us an update on the redistricting committees or the reprecincting committees meeting last evening?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity to meet with the redistricting committee last night and we reviewed the current congressional districts. Reprecincting. And as a follow up to our meeting last, last week, the congressional district and the state representative districts have changed from what we currently exist. The first is that in the congressional district of seven, precinct two and half of precinct four will be moving into that district along with in precinct. I'm sorry, in House Representative, the seventh, I'm sorry, the 12th Suffolk 4A or half of precinct four will be moving into that district. The purpose of us meeting was to see if there was any possible way that the town could reconfigure our precincts to fit within the legislative districting as those lines will not change. Based on the numbers, it precinct four will have to remain as a sub precinct or split precinct. There will be a division between Warren Ave, going down to Thatcher and then going up Lincoln Street. The one section would be in precinct, would be called 4A. That will be in the seventh district. And then the lower half of 4B will be in the eighth district. After meeting with the members, given that there were no options available to change our lines, I came back to the select board feeling, did I do diligence to see if there was anything that could be done? And informed them that despite our best attempts, the precinct four will have to remain as a split precinct.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin. Does anyone have a question or a comment or anything on this agenda item? I think we may have answered the question that the president, the town meeting member raised during citizen speak. And we will have maps, if they're not already available online. I think we'll be putting those up online so that people can take a look at the district. But the precinct four will not change for town meeting elections. It will change for state level election, the congressional seat and the state rep seat. It would be, the precinct would be split for that purpose, but not for town meeting members. Mr., I think Mr. Wells and then Mr. Zulus.
I think you just answered my question, Madam Chair, and the residents concerned, which is the same question I asked Madam Clark last week when we first talked, that for the purposes of town meeting, for local town and the election representation, there is no change in the precincts, correct?
For precinct four, there will be, so the split, it is still running as a complete precinct four. The ballots will still be separated in an A and a B district. However, when they do receive their ballots, all candidates from precinct four would be on each of the ballots. So the ballot would be identical, essentially.
Thank you.
Mr. Zulus and then Mr. Doyle.
Yes, just very quickly, I interpreted the the town meeting members' question to be how will the change, the redistricting affect town meeting members? And so perhaps soon you could, you could describe how the fact that each town meeting member is going to have to run again this year. I think, I think just to.
Right, so, so for precinct four, they, they are not going to have to run because that precinct wasn't touched in the town's redistricting or reprecincting. So precinct four will run, run as typical, the, the three year, those that are up for reelection incumbents, they will run as for their three year term. If there's any membership that we've lost for the two year or the one year term, members can run for that as well. In precincts that are, the, the town's lines have changed, though that membership will have to run. Everybody in that precinct will run again. Incumbents will still be able to run as incumbents insofar as they still, they won't have to get the 10 signatures. They'll get a card, but the entire body of those precincts will have to run for reelection.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Zulus asked the question that I was going to put on the table. So thank you, Mr. Zulus, and thank you, Madam Clark, for your response.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Clark, my question is how will, most people will not be watching this meeting. So how will town meeting members find, in those districts, find out that they'll, they'll all need to be running?
Right, so a letter will go out to all districts that are changing, to all residents. And then subsequently, those town meeting members, I will send them a letter into, in letting them know individually how, how the process will run. I'll also have in the, with the town census that is sent out in January. In the newsletter, I will give that information and then I will be updating my website, my portion of the website, I should say.
And I think we can add that the governor has signed the legislation. So these districts have now been finalized. The only question would be, which we touched on in our last meeting, whether there might be any remedy through litigation. And we did meet earlier this evening with town council. The town was a party to litigation with many other towns back in 1993, 1994 timeframe. But we will not be taking any further action at this time in the way of litigation. The districts haven't set and we will have, we'll have some new districts. We're going to have a little bit of administrative burden, an extra cost with precinct four. And we'll have more residents of the town in Congresswoman Presley's district. Because I always, I'm going to say the names because I'm always confused which is the seventh or which is the eighth. But and fewer in Congressman Lynch's district currently. Those are the two current office holders, but of course, we're talking about districts and not individuals. So we will be, if we don't already have the maps up, I'm sure we'll be getting those up onto the town website for any interested residents to take a look at.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, and I just would like to say if there's any residents that have concerns or questions that, to please feel free to reach out to me and I'll be more than happy to help them out and answer any questions that they may have.
Okay, thank you very much. We know how helpful your offices to residents. So if anyone has a question, please feel free to contact the town courts office. But thank you for waiting this evening, Ms. Galvin, sticking around.
Thank you.
All right, it's 8:49. We're going to go to item, item 11, which is Mr. Hajar and his team, maybe here, I think we have a couple of others, regarding to 30 and 40 Adams Street. Potential development, this is really a concept plan, as I understand it. We're going to have presented to us this evening. And I, I'm sorry for the delay. We had a longer executive session than we thought we would and we had some technical difficulties in that executive session. So thank you for waiting. It's later than we thought we'd be having you on, but we appreciate your patience.
No worries at all. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for all that you do for the town to make it the place that it is. I'm going to move things right along. Derek, my architect, I believe, Derek, you're on.
Yeah, I just got promoted to a panel.
Great, I'm going to turn things right over to you to start the presentation. Great. I'm going to turn things right over to you to start the presentation. Great.
Madam Chair, Mr. Hajar, yeah, there you are. You have the ability to square the sheet. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. I know this is a busy night for everybody here, and there's a bunch of pages here. I'll try to flip through them pretty quickly. But just conceptually, here's the, kind of the money shot on your screen here. What you're looking at here is Chuck and Paul's building here on the right, where the Citizens Bank is here. And the project is to put a couple of floors of residential, two floors of residential above Chuck's existing building here. And behind it, where the MBTA lot is, of course, this is Milton T. Stop here on the trolley line here, would be to put a 45-unit four-story above parking apartment building. And I'll just fly through this quickly. You're all familiar with the site here in Milton Village. And it's context of the Baker Chocolate Factory, Victorian Times, big massive brick buildings here. And then some of the streetscape here in Milton Village. And conceptually, this T station is your gateway into Milton Village, but also over to the Ponsett River. And it's a stop on the bike way here as well. So it's a very important site. And right now, well, you know, here are the photographs right now. You're familiar again, so I'll skip through this pretty quickly. Here's our park in the back here. One way we're facing the river here on the top right, on the left, or top left, we're facing towards the trolley station. Of course, the Ponsett River on the bottom there. When you get off the train right now, when you're off the trolley or tram, whatever you want to call it, you are graced with the back of the building right now and a parking lot. And that's your gateway to the Ponsett River. So, and Milton Village. And unfortunately, as you well know, you can't get up the staircase to get to Adams Street. This proposal would try to improve upon a lot of these things here. So we took some inspiration from all the buildings in the area, materials, brick and metal, and some of the architectural detailing, masonry, and some Victorian details. Some of the contemporary details, too. And we came up with this concept here. And you can see in the massing model here that we're trying to be about the same mass, the same height as a lot of the surrounding buildings here, these commercial buildings, Victorian buildings, to convert it to residential. Here's our lot right now. Now we've got about 36 spaces in the lot, 36 to 37 in the MBTA lot. It's access through War Street here. The river is at the bottom right of the screen, and we have this little parquet here where the farmer's market is. And so what we would do is we'd place the apartments above Chuck's existing building here on the left. This is a parking reconfiguration here on the right that would be underneath the proposed building. Can make improvements to the parquet here. And here's the footprint of the 45-unit building above the MBTA parking lot here on the right. And what we would try to do, we'll talk about this a little bit, a little bit more, is improve the little laneway going that currently goes to the parking lot. Make that more of a roundabout with a drop-off and some parking on either side of that to make up for some of the MBTA spots, which are really pretty underutilized right now as far as we can tell. So the architecture, I'll try to keep things moving here. The architecture is meant to embrace both the 19th century massive brick buildings with their regular rhythms and punches. Whoops, sorry. And also relate to the 21st century with those massive brick buildings holding something lighter and more metallic and glass. So you can see that there's kind of a gesture of one building holding another here. One era holding another, one era of Milton Village versus another. And rather than the back of a building here at the T stop, we wanted something that would be attractive both from far away, as an interesting piece of artwork might be on a large scale. But also, while you're walking around it, we're thinking about a mural that tells perhaps the story of Milton, or that part of Milton, some of the activities that happened right there. There's a lot of wonderful examples. This is sort of just a placeholder in the model right now. But if you can imagine something that's really beautiful that tells the story of the place and brings meaning to the spot as a way of coloring your way off the T here towards the parquet and towards the Ponsett River and also towards Milton Village. This is an existing, the image here is a little bit stretched because of the street view that we manipulated in Photoshop. But the Citizens Bank facade improvement is already underway, what you see here. And what we've done in this image is add a couple of floors here. They would actually stretch a little more towards the top of the building here on the right. This is a more proportionally correct image here. And you can see the new building over at the MBTA lot on the left would carry that same roof height across and really carry the street wall around the corner and then along the trolley line here. When you get off the trolley, instead of seeing a parking lot and the back of a building, now you see a lot of stuff. You see the mural here on the right that's going to be beautiful and intriguing and tell us a story about place. You see a lot of shiny new building here on the left with all the metal and glass, but also the references to the past with thick masonry piers. Similar here on top of Chuck's building. And then there are various walkways. One of the images that we looked at at the beginning, we saw some walkways over the river, and we took that, and connectors between buildings that were light and metallic. And we took that as inspiration for a walkway that would connect Adams Street to the new building here on the left. And then walkways that would connect the two buildings here at the top, so they could share elevator floor. So as you walk to the park, this is your gateway. This becomes your gateway into Milton Village here. There would be lighting here along the way. And when you come the opposite direction here, you'd have this little drop-off here. There'd be some T signage that's not shown right now. You'd see that mural wrap around the corner, so you know that's something interesting that's over there. It becomes your destination to go to. You can see underneath the building through the parking area, so you can see that there's the trolley destination beyond. And you can see as you walk towards here, that mural wraps around, so it's obviously a place to be occupied. It's not a back alley. Here's the entrance to the apartment building. We're over on that parquet side in the back, by the way. Chuck's building right now is over here. And then here we are, walking to the T station through this new pedestrian pathway. So the parking that's there for the T now would need to be, the public parking would be relocated. We need to be relocated. Parking that's there now would become parking for the apartment building that we're looking at a reduced parking count because we're right here on a transit line. And we're in a walkable district. You can walk to a supermarket, you can walk to get coffee, and then you can get on the T and go downtown to work. The layouts, these are rough layouts of what the apartments would be, per floor, mixture of one and two bedrooms and studios here. This is the 45-unit new building here on the right with the core facing the parquet here, and the tram line is up here at the top. Adams Street is over on the top left. You can see the existing office building that Chuck's in here on the right. It's got a couple of floors. And then the new floors on top of Chuck's building here on the left. And again, the apartments continue on the right. So then we would be adding eight units to the existing 30 Adams building that Chuck's in right now. And then the new building would be 45 units. Here are the elevations. You can see Adams Street on the top right here. And you walk down a reconstructed MBTA stair, so that would take care of that problem. And then you'd have a walkway to 40 Adams, right from Adams Street, the new building of the T lot. And you can see again, the ceiling, sorry, the roof line carries between the two buildings and just steps a little bit down from the building, the existing brick building beyond there. The bottom is the park side elevation. That masonry wraps right around that bottom right there. There's a section through the buildings. You can see some of the walkways between the buildings here. It would be very open, glassy. Square footage is the new building of 40 Adams that would be on top of the MBTA lot would be about 38,000 square feet. And we'd be adding about 9,000 square feet to 30 Adams. So, you know, that's the, that's the final limit right there. And we've been speaking with Tim and Allison over at Planning. They've been wonderful through the process of investigating what we can do here. And we've been speaking to the MBTA about this, and we know that they're interested in a way to move forward here. And we've been, we met, I think it was a week or two ago, with the Milton Landy Committee. I've had a good discussion with them. And we're looking at, you know, we are considering how to deal with relocating some of the parking here that seems to be underutilized parking for the T right now. And we think that perhaps some widening of the existing lane that goes to the T parking lot. I was actually sketching it a little bit tonight while I was waiting to get back into the meeting here. You know, we could look at something like, you know, given that we're going to have a new sort of public walkway through here to the T station at the top left, you know, that's about the same amount of area that we might need to repurpose from the park as, you know, instead of grass, perhaps it's brick pavers or something, that perhaps at some points during the week, that becomes parking for the T. At other parts of the week, that's a farmer's market or other public use. But for instance, we can get about 18, 17 or 18 spots right here alone in this area. Chuck, I'm going to turn it over to you if you want to say anything further.
To say that we're very excited about the project. I know a lot of people look to downsize in Milton, and there's not many options of places to go. Being right on the T, we thought this would be just a great spot to do what we're trying to do. We do need some help from the town to work with the T to find them some spots. We're finding that there's about 15 cars in the lot, sometimes less, sometimes a little bit more. And as Derek just said, he has a spot there leading up to the roundabout where he can recreate quite a few of those spaces. We just need some, you know, some help from the town as to where we can, what we can offer the T to hopefully get this thing moving forward. And I'm hoping you're as excited about it as I am. Thanks for taking the time tonight to allow us to present.
Yeah, we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much. Does anyone have a question or a comment? I know it's getting late. It's after nine o'clock, but this is, any development proposal for Milton is important. And anyone, it's here as a concept plan. I have some thoughts on the concept and questions that I may wish to ask. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Ms. Wells?
Just an update to Madam Chair, the Landy Committee will be looking, we're already started us a preliminary discussion, just looking. The parking is clearly the, one of the big, as you know, being on the NPIC down there for so long. Anything moving, shuffling, parking, parking in Village is a, oh, come on, I'm trying to think of the word. You know, the value to those spaces, so it will create, requires some creativity. I only have one question, and I didn't get this at our meeting. Are we talking, are these condominiums or these rental apartments, Mr. Asia?
They're going to be apartments for rent.
Okay.
And I believe there's an affordability component that I heard is 10 to 12 percent.
It's built into your PUD. Was it, Madam Chair, when you passed that, do?
If this is not the Village zoning, yes.
Yes. Let's all head, Madam Chair. Thank you. And we will be digging into this. Told Allison and Tim that they want to bring it up, so we're going to look right into it.
Okay, Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Hajar.
I think you just went on mute. Sorry.
You're on mute, Arthur.
Thanks again. Thank you, Mr. Hajar, very much. Appreciate you taking time to be with us tonight. With respect to the reference to the stairs, could you elaborate on any possibilities of their incorporation into the project vis-à-vis any plans that you have along those lines?
Sure. We, as Derek said, we've been speaking with the MBTA. And they are, they told us right away that they would like to make that, if they're going to work with us on the parking relocation, that they want to make sure that we would agree to fix the stairs, and we told them we would happily do so.
Does, if I may, with a follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
As the matter of ADA compliance come into that conversation with them?
I'm not sure if they brought that up, but I know that with that roundabout drop-off area that enters right at grade to the T, I don't think we would need an elevator, an escalator, or anything coming from up there. Once again, I'm not a zoning expert, but maybe Derek would want to weigh in with some more expertise.
Yeah, I think we had been anticipating that either somebody would be dropped off, like Chuck had just mentioned. And so rather than having somebody in a wheelchair wheeling through a parking lot to get to the T station, they would be able to walk along a dedicated pedestrian path now. So that would be an improvement right there. And then as for accessible, accessibility off Adams Street directly, yeah, I think that's something we could look at further. We're going to, obviously, we're going to have an elevator in the complex. And the question is, well, to what's agreed we give the public access? But, you know, I think that's something that we'd be open to looking at further, certainly, you know.
I think that could be tough, Derek. I'm not sure. I would just think that the handicap accessible entrance would be from the roundabout below with that designated walkway, which is a big improvement versus going over the parking lot right to the T. That's the way I think would work the best, which is much better than it is now.
Right.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Anyone else? My thought is, and obviously I'm only speaking individually, I like the fact that you're incorporating the brick design. There's a lot of brick in Milton Village, and I think that's what really distinguishes the Village area is all the brick buildings. I'm, personally, I'd like to see a little more brick and a little less metal as part of the design. And the mural, the mural, I'm not as enthusiastic about. I like more the classic style of the brick for the Milton Village area. But again, just one opinion, and the planning board and other members of this board, and the zoning board, and whoever else you have to be before, may have different thoughts, but those are, those would be my thoughts in terms of design, in terms of concept. But I think generally, it's great to see you're exploring the air rights with the T, and it's an exciting development, and it would be nice to see the Milton Village zoning that took so long to get through town meeting attempted and put in place and utilized by one of the, by one of the business owners in that area. And hopefully, that would lead to further development in Milton Village. Because it's an area where we, there's a lot of opportunity right in that area. So for what it's worth, those would be my thoughts on the design. I like the height, and I like the fact that you're looking to be in line density and height-wise with other structures in the area. I would just encourage a little more brick in the design. That's just my
Yeah. I appreciate those comments. And once again, these are Derek's designs. And I'm happy to go with the consensus of everyone thinks there should be a little bit more brick. And no one likes the mural. We're happy to work with everyone, make sure we please the majority. But we'll talk to as many people as we can and come up with a consensus, if that's okay.
Absolutely. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of other views on that issue. Mr. Wells has his hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the proponents, timeline or when do you think you will be going before starting this or heading towards the planning board? Do you have a timeline?
Yeah, I'm still not very clear about the process. I know that, I believe the next step is we need the town to let us know where we can get about 20 or 25 spots. And then we need to do something with the T. We need to negotiate an agreement with them. And then once we have that agreement with them, we're ready to just move forward, you know, as fast as we can. I should probably hire an attorney that knows the proper permitting process in Milton just to be able to walk us along, make sure we check all the boxes, because I'm a little unclear about that. But we want to get everyone's, you know, just pass this around now and see, get some feedback. But we're excited about it, and I do need to figure out the next steps. I'll be huddling with Derek and Paul in my office, and maybe we need to reach out to somebody to help us to know what the next steps are.
I think the planning director should be able to help you with that also.
Okay, maybe we'll reach out.
What the next steps are for the permitting.
That's a great suggestion, because I never, really have not, I've done renovations in Milton, but never built anything from the ground up.
Anyone else? Any comments this evening? Ms. Collins?
Well, I just want to note Mr. Hajar's comment that, you know, in order to move forward, he needs some assistance from the town. And I know Allison and Tim have been, you know, speaking with the MBTA, but just that whatever assistance we need to give to at least explore how we, how we work those other parking spaces. You don't, that seems to be something that's in our wheelhouse. Am I correct? that seems to be something that's in our wheelhouse, am I correct?
Is that question for me? Or?
It's for our Chair and, and Mr. Dennehy.
Okay, good, yeah, I think I could answer that one.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, having just heard about this for the first time this evening, I, I think the planning staff is the right way to go here with the next steps and with coming up with the universe of issues that need to be explored and how we might address them going forward.
Thank you.
Just so you know, we did the Jessen building over in East Milton Square, where the Rockland Trust is, we had an elevator, we did that whole thing over, that was several years back. I think we made a big improvement to that building, and we're doing the facade over of our building now, we're underway, we hope to be done some, well, weather permitting, sometime in January. And that was all Derek's, his architectural drawings, we used his firm.
All right, well, well, thank you for the presentation, and it's good for the community to start hearing about this project, and I'm sure that will lead to some more, more input at different public meetings, and you may want to, Tim's or Wes' can advise you best, but you may want to get on a planning board agenda at some point to, to get some initial input from them as well. But I, I'll leave that up to Tim to advise you in terms of the planning.
Okay, that's great advice, and thanks for allowing us to present tonight. So far, we've got a lot of positive feedback from everyone we spoke with, hopefully it continues.
No, it's, it's exciting news, so thank you for sharing it with us this evening.
Okay, a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're really excited, thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.
Okay, we have a few other folks waiting, so I think we should try to get to the items where we have people here to speak. If we could postpone the COVID item and go on to the, we have stormwater rates, we have Chase Berkeley, and Finance Committee, I see Karen Preval. Why don't we, shall we move up? Item thirteen first, Mr. Zulus, do you think the ARPA and Finance Committee report will be a lengthy item?
I don't expect so, Madam Chair.
Okay, why don't we go to that, and then we'll go to stormwater, if that's agreeable to the board, then we'll come back to the COVID update. And last, Miss Preval being moved into the panelist group.
And Chief Madden as well, if you want.
And she, okay, and Chief Madden, great. We'll go to Mr. Zulus for the side.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee met on December second, and as a result of the discussions, has two recommendations for the board. The first record, for ARPA allocations, the first recommendation is a recommendation with respect to radio communications for the fire department. Chief Madden, who can speak to this more specifically, described for us the fact that the portable radio communication system in the fire department is broken and unreparable. And the portable radios that they use are no longer supported, these are, these are old Motorola, Motorola radio communication systems, they're no longer supported, and they are cobbling it together with two different types of radios, and their radio communications are below, below industry standard. And so, and so, this request was to allocate ARPA funding to purchase a new portable radio communication system for the fire department. The Finance, Finance Committee voted to recommend that this project be funded by the ARPA allocation at an estimated cost of $210,000. And the recommendation from the Finance Committee was to use county funds, our county fund allocation for this. And the, as you said, the estimated cost at that time was $210,000. Subsequently, the Chief has given us an updated quote for $218,104.25. And so, I'll ask Mr. Doyle to fill in anything I missed, but that's the first recommendation from the, from the Finance Committee.
I have nothing to add. Your information is right on target. I'd be prepared to make a motion after we hear from Chief Madden.
I'm prepared for you to make that, I'm prepared with that motion right now, I don't even need to hear anymore.
Well, we don't, we don't want to have him here and not give him an opportunity to say hello.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Madam Chair, thank you very much. Thank you to the, to the Select Board and the Finance Committee for hearing, you know, some of our concerns. Absolutely, Mr. Zulus said everything right, you know, the portable radios that we have, Motorola hasn't made those since 2012, and they stopped supporting them in 2018. So we had a couple broken, and to try and replace one or two to piecemeal it is just, you know, unsafe. It's a, it's a critical piece of equipment that we, we have to know better than anything else, and if we're using one of, you know, one portable radio with engine four, and we change to a newer one with engine one, it's, we expect the firefighters to know how to use this equipment in the dark, in adverse conditions. So having the same piece of equipment, universe, universal throughout the entire department is really key. You know, I was going to try and replace the, the two or three that were broken, but then I found out that just that, you know, the overall status of the equipment is just, it's outdated, doesn't meet the industry standards, the latest 2000, I think it was twenty or nineteen standards for NFPA for the portable radio systems. And the equipment is just vital to what we do and how we operate, so I appreciate it.
Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, there is one thing that, that I would mention with respect to the urgency of this. My understanding at that meeting, and Chief Madden can, can confirm whether it's still the case, was if we can get this purchase in by December 31st, we can save what is expected to be a 10% increase, which is, you know, north of $20,000. So that's the, the, the timing on this is if we can move on this and get this, get this in, we can, we can save some money.
Make your motion, Arthur. I'll second.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I would.
Arthur, you're on mute. You weren't initially, but. There you go.
Yeah, you got me. All right, Madam Chair, thank you for your patience and indulgence with my mutations. I would at this time move the adoption of the recommendation by the Fire Department for the purchasing of a new portable radio system for the Town of Milton's firefighters in the amount of $218,104.25.
Seconded by Mr. Wells, is there any discussion on the motion? And the intent would be to apply to the county for the funding?
That's correct, that should be added.
Hearing no, yes.
One question, Chief, you buy off the ATT contract, did, that, collaborators, you want to get in, you want to get this done before the bumps up, the cost bumps up, I'm correct?
I'm sorry, Mr. Wells.
You're buying off, yeah, Michael, he's buying off one of the regional contracts? That's, that's where the price comes in, correct? That's it, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm good.
Okay, then, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second recommendation voted by the Finance Committee on December 2nd was a recommendation to allocate $950,000 of ARPA funding for the purpose of designing, building, and deploying a town-owned fiber optic network, which would be funded either by the town or the county as determined by the town administrator and the town accountant. The Municipal Broadband Committee, as you may remember, made, may remember, made this recommendation a few weeks ago. This proposal has been vetted at town meeting, and has been vetted a few times, I think, by this board. I will add that very soon after the vote of the Finance Committee on December 2nd, we learned that Representative Driscoll's earmark for $250,000 for municipal broadband had been accepted by, by the House, and I think it, it has subsequently been accepted, my understanding is, by the Conference Committee, and is, as Senator Timblety mentioned earlier, sitting on the governor's desk. So, given that, I think our recommendation, now, Arthur can weigh in, but I think our recommendation would be altered to seek an allocation of $700,000 rather than $950,000, but $700,000 for the purpose of designing, building, and deploying the town-owned fiber optic network. And again, Arthur, if you have something to add, please, please do.
I think that's an appropriate adjustment, and I gratitude to our legislators for that. And with that information, I would move, Madam Chair, the approval of funding for the development and deployment, municipal broadband, in the amount of $700,000 allocated from the Norfolk County funding source.
Second.
Okay, I have a question, is this 700,000, is this net of the money the town meeting appropriated from the, what was the special cable account?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, that, so the total amount, the total estimate, that we had the updated estimate from, that, from the consultant for this, the town-owned fiber optic network was approximately $1.3 million. And so, the, the suggestion at town meeting was $350,000 from the cable fund and $950,000 from the ARPA funding, and that's what was voted by the Municipal Broadband Committee as a, as a request, the $950,000. So that 700 would be net of the, of the 350, and now the 250.
Okay, I think what might be helpful to the three of us who are not on the Finance Committee, just going forward, is for the packages, even if it's just an email showing what, what the request is going to be, because I, you know, we didn't have the specifics on the fire request or the 700 request. And I think we also might want to, if we can create some kind of a spreadsheet that shows what we've already appropriated and what the balance is that's remaining, I think that would be helpful. We should vote on this, and then I, I have, I still get the Housing Authority on here as well, and I have a suggestion that I received from a former member of the board, that we should ask the Finance Committee to explore. Ms. Collins, your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Doyle mentioned using the county money, but I, I may have misheard, in the beginning, I thought Mr. Zulus said that Mr. Dennehy and Ms. Preval would decide whether it was county or municipal, I mean, you know, town. Is that, okay, just trying to.
Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, that was the vote of the Finance Committee, is, is that because the timing of this, of this, of this funding is, is, is unclear at this point, and, and it may differ, right? We'll need certain amounts, certain chunks at different times. Our vote at Finance was to leave it in the discretion of the town administrator and the town accountant to determine whether to seek county funding or to use our direct funding for that. But that, but, but we thought it was important to, to make clear that this is being allocated for this purpose, and then, and then we'd leave it to the town administrator and the town accountant to, to determine the timing and the funding. And Katie, to your point, I know Mike, Mike Dennehy is the town administrator, and Karen Preval are working on kind of a, kind of an overall spreadsheet, so we can have a look at, at, you know, the running tally of what we funded, what remains, and what, what is possible. So Mike, I, I may have stolen your thunder there, but you might want to.
No, no, that, that's perfect, Mike, Mr. Zulus, and, and Madam Chair, and members of the board, Mr. Zulus is correct. Finance Director Preval and I worked through the two buckets of what has currently, or prior to this evening's board meeting, what currently had been allocated and voted and approved by this board, and what bucket they were coming out of. Additionally, Alan Bishop, who's been inundated with work implementing the new police and fire software application, along with Rob Mallett, is putting together a larger spreadsheet that will talk about potential projects as well, so. Ms. Preval can share that, that first document with everyone this evening.
That would be helpful, because, you know, these are large amounts that we're spending tonight, and there's nothing in our materials for, you know, for Ms. Collins, Mr. Wells, and me to know what amounts we're going to be seeking tonight. So obviously, we want to be sure we.
I'm a big faith, I'm a big faith guy, Madam Chair.
Even on the town side, so we want to be able to, to know what's, what's, what the balance is that's left. Mr. Doyle, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and yes, we have been working toward having that information available. I would therefore just amend the motion that the $700,000 came from the ARPA funding sources in the borough.
Thank you. And good evening, Ms. Preval, you had your hand raised.
Good evening, hi, Madam Chair. If you needed me to share my screen, I can show you the allocations of what has been requested for funding through the Norfolk County money and through the Treasury's office. So if you want to see that, I can share my screen, and I can also email that to everybody.
Email would be good. What, if we could do, because it's getting late, and I know you've been waiting, and we still have a lot on the agenda to get through tonight. So why don't we take a quick look?
Thank you, Karen, very much for doing all that work.
You're welcome. So we have the Treasury funds, the 2.8 million that was authorized, we had 1.4 that we've received in cash. A million dollars has been allocated to water main improvement project. Ninety-four, $94,229 has been allocated to the school priority one, and we had $60,000 for the health department for contact tracing. And we also had another $29,432.45 that was allocated to cover contact tracing and one of the staff salary. So the balance out of the 1.4 that's available is 260. And going to the Norfolk County, we had the park and recreation management software upgrade that was approved with 26,229, and then school priority one for FY '23 and '24 for 376. Then we had the Harlem Street culvert and drainage assessment for 80,800, and the ClearGov, which was the public-facing software that will allow us to automate the budget process in terms of putting the warrant together, that was 20,325. So that leaves a balance of $4,855,315 from Norfolk County, and 260 from the Treasury's funds. In terms of what Mike was requesting for broadband, you know, for the amount of 700,000, we probably would look at Norfolk County just due to the fact that there's only 260 available. It really depends on the timing, because if we're moving forward with a project right now, there's 260 available, we would have to fund part of it from the Norfolk County through the application, but then we're also getting the additional 1.4 in the spring of 2022. That would be the balance of the Treasury funds.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful. Do we have anything, we have the Housing Authority on the agenda also under this item, is there anything on that this evening?
Madam Chair, if I might, I, I think we have the, the motion pending.
Uh, okay, all right, why don't we, that's right, we wrote on that. So the motion made by Mr. Doyle relating to the broadband for $700,000, so that was seconded, I believe, right? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much. Do we have anything for the Housing Authority this evening?
Madam Chair, we, we haven't had the, we haven't vetted that project yet, along with, we have a few other projects that we're hoping to hear at our, at our next meeting, including the Affordable Housing Trust projects, technology, technology infrastructure, infrastructure projects, there's some software needs projects that we may hear about, DPW projects, which are still in line. And then I will mention for our citizens member, Ms. And then I will mention for our citizens member, Ms. Etienne Dupree, we have, we have received her email, and we can have, we can have her in on Friday as well. I think that's our next meeting on Friday as well, if it makes, if it's, if she's available then to talk about that one as well.
Okay.
That's all I, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes, then we have Ms. Preval, I think, on that point.
Hi, um, oh, Richard, would you?
No, go ahead, no, go. No, go ahead, no, you go first.
Through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that through the ARPA funding that's through Norfolk County, the town can provide grants to residents that have businesses. There is an application process that they would have to go through, and we're still in the process of putting those together. We're looking at other cities and towns that have been granting grants to different residents and businesses, nonprofits, and what that application will look like. There's a lot of information that's going to be involved that they would have to fill out, but we're in the process of, well, I'm in the process of looking at that and, you know, just getting more information in terms of how that practice would work, what the best practice would be for the town if we were to award grants to different organizations.
Okay, thank you. So, that's some, more information to come then on that. But I think Mr. Dennehy could perhaps be the point person with the resident to reach out and let the resident know when the Friday meeting is and how to access it. Mr. Dennehy?
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to say that. There was another resident that had also reached out. I'll be replying to both of those tomorrow morning, inviting them to the eight o'clock Friday morning meeting, at which point I believe Brian Tatro from Milton Housing will also be there to present his point.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And my point is to, to the, to the resident, but to follow up on Karen's point. Because I was completely unaware that, you know, unlike the CARES Act, where organizations were applying directly for money, that part of our award that either organizations or nonprofits could apply to us for portions of the money that women are what? Is that what, what I'm, is that how I'm taking this? Am I right, Karen? Is that it?
Ms. Preval?
Excuse me, um, Richard, could you repeat that question, please?
So, I was on a, so I didn't know, I was not sure that this application we heard tonight, I was unaware, because I've never heard any discussion that people are going to be able, our citizens are going to be able to apply to us or businesses for grants from ARPA. So, two questions. A, is that true? Or do we have to take a vote to allow it? Is that automatic? And B, what's the ceiling? Is there ceiling on, you know, what if tomorrow you get hit with a million dollars in requests? And I may not have to, what's the ceiling going to be on, or is there a ceiling on requests or grants?
So, within the interim, it does, within the interim rule through the Treasury's office, it does state that towns are able to provide grants. I've attended a few conferences with the different counties, Plymouth County, Bristol County, Norfolk County. We don't have a lot to go with right now. You know, this is like a moving target, and as we, you know, as we move forward, we get addition, you know, additional information on how we should have things set up. But as of right now, I don't have a ceiling on what that amount is. We don't have, you know, the best practice. These are things that we would have to put into place with the conversations with Norfolk County, you know, and just advice, and, you know, in terms of how we move forward with this. But we're pretty much in the beginning stages. It is eligible for us to do it, but we don't have any guidelines set up. So, that's something that I'll be working on, working, you know, through the Massachusetts Municipal Accounting Association, working with other municipalities as we put together documentation and best practices on how we would be able to move forward to initiating these grants.
Follow-up, Madam Chair, just a follow-up, which is exactly what I think it's, before we have people coming into the finance, and then before us are coming to sort of, I think we need to let the finance director get her, get our ducks in a row here, so that we know where we're at. Because I just know how many questions I have right now, and it is, you know, grants are something I'm very familiar with in my life outside of here. So, I just want to make sure that you're prepared for this, so that people don't come to the finance committee, whoever, with hopes of getting something that we either may or may not be able to give. I'd rather have us, like, have our infrastructure, whatever it is, our ceilings, our allowances in place before we start to do this.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was just my point there.
No, those are good points. Thank you. And I think we can probably, so we've left the finance committee kind of making recommendations, so I think they should decide whether it's premature, whether they want to hear from the residents, and then get back to the resident once we have more information. But they might want to hear the request anyway. But we can, I think we can leave that up to the finance committees to how they'd like to handle that with Mr. Dennehy and Ms. Preval. We have Arthur, and then we have Mike. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For Mr. Dennehy, maybe, Mike, we can get around to all members of the select board and post as appropriate the American Rescue Plan Act Eligible Uses Summary. It's a two-page document, and that might be helpful background information. And yes, we've been moving very quickly in this, let's see, somewhat uncertainty because of the newness, but that Karen reflected, but we want to get the stabilization that everybody desires in place. In the meantime, Mike, as a second point, could you recap the meeting with the Norfolk County and the awards that were made, and how it positions relative to all the communities? And also, the importance of timing and the fact that ultimately, if there are monies left over that are not used by other communities, then there will be an opportunity for redistribution down the line.
Is it?
Yes.
Oh, Mike, you want to take that?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So, so exactly why I had my hand up. So, last week, we went to the Norfolk County Commissioners, and we are, we, along with Wellesley, because of the good work of Mike Dennehy and Karen Preval, we, along with Wellesley, were the first two communities to be able to access the ARPA funding, and the county commissioners, Commissioner Shea, Commissioner Stady, Commissioner Collins from Milton, along with Treasurer Bellotti, were very complimentary of the work that Mr. Dennehy and Ms. Preval have done. And, and, and they are ready, willing, and able to hear the requests for additional funding. And so, and so while we want to be deliberative in this, moving to appropriate and allocate these fundings, this funding sooner rather than later is a good thing. These, the commissioners are ready to allocate the funding, and so, so it seems to me, Mr. Dennehy and Ms. Preval deserve a lot of credit for moving us along less far, and we want to keep moving with that momentum that we have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And under the category of other, I just want to bring up that former selectman Rick Neely mentioned to me that sidewalk repair is something we should consider for the use of ARPA funds. There's a lot of sidewalks in town that, I'm sure DPW can speak to this better than any of us can, that really are in need of repair. And in particular, he mentioned Adams Street down between St. Agathus and the Font Bonn area and Brook Road. As to, there was an MWA project many years ago that replaced a water main on Adams, but did not complete the sidewalks, the sidewalk work. So, I thought that was a good suggestion, and I told Mr. Neely I would bring that to the attention of the finance committee and Public Works. It may or, may not be on Public Works's list, but it's, I think it's something that we should consider for ARPA funds. Okay, do we have anything else on this topic before we go into item 14? Mr. Berkeley's been waiting a long time. I'd like to get to stormwater rates next. Okay.
Let's go, Madam Chair.
Mr. Berkeley, item 14. Thank you for waiting this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
So, we're presenting tonight the FY '22 recommended stormwater rates. We're doing this a little bit earlier in the year than we typically have in the past because of some new requirements by the Department of Revenue that these rates be set prior to the tax recap certification. So, that's why you're seeing it a little bit earlier than usual. But they're ready to present anyway, so it's not an issue on our end. So, the difference in budget from '21 to '22 was just under $13,000 on a million-dollar budget. So, that works out to be about a 1.3 increase. So, that's one of those budgets we really try to keep as low as possible, because we realize the impact to those rates has fell very hard by the, by the residents. So, stormwater rates are linear, where every type of property pays the same rate per square foot. It doesn't change based on the type of use of property or the size. It's a linear rate, and it goes across all properties, tax-exempt included. So, on the next slide there, we have displayed last year's rates and the proposed rates for FY '22. As you'll see, we round them to the nearest dollar for simplicity in administration within the bills and understanding by the residents. So, those are for single-family homes. All other properties outside of single-family homes get billed on their actual square footage, but single-family homes are grouped into the tiers, as you see them. And every home in that tier pays that rate for the tier. All other properties pay based on their actual size. And so, as you can see, it's nominal dollars, single digits in all tiers, that they're increasing because of that relatively low 1.3 increase in budget rates. So, they basically speak for themselves. I think this is hopefully palatable for everybody, understanding that it basically just includes contractual increases and salary increases for the employees. So, just as a quick reminder, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund pays for the operation and maintenance of the almost 100 miles of storm drain main and catch basins that collect rainwater and transport it to the water bodies throughout town.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Berkeley. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berkeley? And if not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the stormwater utility fees, or rates rather, for tiers 1, 2, 3, 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 as presented.
Madam Chair, I want to approve the fiscal year 2022, 2022 stormwater rates in the town of Massachusetts.
Second.
As presented by the Department of Public Works. Thank you, Mr. Chase, for doing that. And Mr. Berkeley.
Okay, then. Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Berkeley. We appreciate it, and thank you for your patience.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night, Chase. Thank you.
Back to the frozen stormwater.
Nice job with the tree, Chase. That was a genius.
Thank you. Credit goes all to the crew.
Okay, we have Ms. Preval with us still, and we have budget process next on our agenda. I'm hoping we can maybe do a brief discussion tonight, and we could put this back on our next meeting in December, if necessary, just given the lateness of the hour and the amount of business we still have on the agenda. So, Ms. Preval, thank you for coming in. I don't know whether you and Mr. Dennehy wanted to start a discussion on this.
Whatever Mike would like for you, Madam Chair. I can share my screen, which has a copy of our budget calendar, if you like.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, did you want to say anything?
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I just want to commend Karen against, done, she has multiple objects in the air between ARPA, closing out the CARES, closing out fiscal '21. This week, we sat down and met with all the departments about where they stand 41% of the way fiscal '22. So, a lot of work being done. In the meantime, she's also putting together our FY '23 budget process. And I think you'll appreciate all the work that she's done on this as well. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike. We started in November with the town administrators briefing the departments on the FY '23 budget. On the 24th, we requested salary worksheets from all the departments. We have received all of them back today. So, within my office and payroll and HR, we're looking and reviewing those. All of the budgets are going to be submitted to departments on Monday, the 13th. And on that day, we're also having a department head meeting, and it's just going to go over the guidelines for the FY '23 budget along with examples on supplemental request forms. What we're looking for this year is a level-funded budget, except for anything where we had contractual increases. Anything above contractual increases is, or will be submitted on a supplemental request form. So, we'll show what was funded in FY '22, if anything was funded, what their request is for FY '23, and an explanation for what that variance is. So, so that will go out to departments on the, on the 13th. Next week, we also will be having our capital committee meeting. For that meeting, we'll be giving, I'll be providing an updated status and honor all of our open capital projects. We're going to review the FY '23 proposed projects, and we're also going to have a debt service overview of what our debt service looks like, you know, over the next couple of decades. On January 3rd, boards and commissions will be able, will have access to update warrant articles. We're going to be working with ClearGov and having them trained. Because we're moving forward with automating the warrant book process, everyone will have that, all of the boards and commissions will have access just to their individual articles. So, we'll be able to have, you know, the warrant book put together rather quickly. Most of the information, Lynden, did a lot of work as we were going through the software just to see if it would be feasibly, feasible to use this year. So, the entire document that was in the warrant has been updated in the software for the system. So, it's just a matter of going in and, you know, making adjustments. So, I think this will allow everyone the opportunity to view the budget at any point in time. We can view, give view-only access, and then we'll have materials that will go out in videos to show you how to use the software. I have January 10th, just with the holidays, a lot of people taking time off, but I've allowed January 10th as a deadline for all of the budgets to be into the accounting office. So, this is all of the FY '23 proposed supplemental requests. At that time, I also will have a preliminary revenue projection, and that's just going to, that will only be for what our tax level is, local receipts, because it will still be waiting for the Department of Revenue to certify free cash, and we're waiting for the governor's cherry sheet figures. So, between the 10th and the 18th, on the 8, January 18th, the day after Martin Luther King Day, that entire week, we're going to set aside for department head meetings. So, the department heads will be coming in and meeting with the town administrator and myself to go over their budgets, over their supplemental requests, and then we'll be looking at revenue projections constantly as we get new information in. Right now, our balance sheet has been submitted to Department of Revenue. Our tax recap will be submitted tomorrow. They're giving us an estimate probably towards the end of January in terms of certifying our free cash. And then the governor usually provides the cherry sheet numbers at the end of January, usually on January 21st, 22nd. I have, so, in terms of this whole budget process, by the end of January, I'd like to have a pretty firm number of where we are in terms of the expenses, salaries. So, going into February, March, and April, these are all, you know, going pretty much into February, March. These, I haven't put any dates, but, you know, I'm using this month for final budget reviews and meetings. When I started last February, there were a lot of revisions and a lot of meetings to go over, you know, different cuts and increases. So, I wanted to allow the warrant committee, the select board, to have a chance and opportunity, if you want to do anything different, if you want to meet with the departments, if you want to hear about their needs. I want to make sure that material is provided in a timely manner, that you have enough time to review it. A lot of feedback that I've received over the last 20-plus years of doing these budgets is that people need time to review it, to be able to understand it, to be able to ask questions, and to, I want to make sure that that allows us time to do this. So, February, March, then going into April, you know, we start moving closer to the town meeting. So, I had tentative dates for the warrant, you know, just being submitted to the print shop, being mailed to residents on the 13th, with a town meeting, tentative date in May. When we get closer to those months, we'll be able to put in more dates, but I wanted to provide this as, you know, the starting calendar for the budget process. And if there's any input or feedback that I- And if there's any input or feedback that I can, um, receive from your committee, I'm welcome to add. I'm always looking to improve and to make sure that this process that we're doing is in a collaborative manner.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any question? Yes, tha- thank you, Ms. Provost, so that, um, first of all, I'm glad you've put together a calendar, um, because this is some of the finance committees wanted to do for a while and I, and I think we'll, we'll need to tweak it as we go into next year. We're, we're doing it now, um, but what, one thing that I want to bring up is, you know, we have sort of an internal accounting process that needs to play out, but we also have a warrant committee process that needs to play out. And we have bylaws that we have certain dates in the bylaws that I think may not mesh up with some of these dates. So we've told the warrant committee that, we're going to be a little bit flexible this year, but I, but I, but I think which probably should happen is maybe this, I don't know if you have it on your agenda already for the finance meeting on Friday morning, but if not, I think then at the next Friday, the next finance meeting, this probably should go on the agenda for a discussion. Under the bylaws, budgets due to the warrant committee on December first and then the final budget to do January thirty-first, and then the warrant committee really runs the show from there. Um, so, you know, on the one hand, a few years ago, we, 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 we put in this special legislation that we want the town administrator to present a bill, a budget to the warrant committee to start off the warrant committee process, but what I want to be sure is that all these dates here are going to work for the warrant committee. And I think this is going to be a work in process this year, but it's terrific that we have it, we have a calendar, um, that we're working through here. I, I think some of these dates may need to be tweaked a little bit and it, it wasn't clear to me what was meant by boards updating warrant articles online, but I think you explained it. Ms. Provost, that it, if we're going to automate some of this, um, I think, I, I think probably a conversation with George Asher, the chair of the warrant committee, is needed here to, so that he's up to speed. And I think I'd like to take part in that as chair of this board, probably our finance committee needs to be part of it as well. Uh, because we're making some changes here, which are probably good in terms of modernizing the system, but we still want to keep the warrant committee process pretty much intact. So tho- tho- those are my thoughts. I don't know if the finance committee has this on your agenda for this Friday.
But, Madam Chair, I, uh, we did discuss it, uh, last Friday at our meeting and, and, and went through this initially and I, I think it's on. I, my, as I sit here, I don't remember what the, what the agenda is, but, uh, but if it's not, we'll either supplement it if we can, uh, or we'll, uh, we'll certainly take it up shortly thereafter.
Okay, great. Right. And I think it's a matter of, just be a matter of bringing Mr. Asher into the process. Yes, Ms. Provost.
Um, through you, Madam Chair. I, I definitely will work with the warrant committee and I was provided, um, and updated, um, the bylaws that show the dates that the budgets need to be in. Um, and that's a conversation that I would like to have with the warrant committee. Um, you know, as we move forward, going into the FY twenty-four budget, I think there were some delays this year just due with the, you know, having a new, um, finance director. There were different reports that we were submitting to the state and there were different deadlines in terms of CARES Act and reporting that we had to get in, but I definitely would like to have that conversation. I think presenting a budget to the warrant committee in December, it, a lot of it would be level funded because revenue dictates and derives having a balanced budget. So not knowing what our revenue figures are, um, it's hard to then produce a balanced budget. And so in terms of that timing, it really comes down to when we're able to close out the fiscal year, submit the balance sheet to the Department of Revenue, set our taxes, once the tax rates are set, at that point in time, you have some of the revenue other than maybe cherry shoot unless you look at and you use a projection of a prior year. But I definitely would love to sit down and have that conversation with George.
Okay, good. That, that would be great. And I think this is a great start, but just to be clear, it's not, it's not revenueable, going to project in December. It's just the department level budget requests that are due to the warrant committee. There's nothing in the bylaws about the town administrator presenting anything to the warrant committee. That all came about as part of the legislation. So, before, prior to that legislation, the warrant committee was the whole show on the budget. That committee ran everything and there was really no accountability and no real formal role for town management. And that became a real concern over the years that it was first of all, an awful lot of work on a volunteer committee, but that there should be some starting point for the warrant committee that comes from town government. So that's really what the process has been the last few years, but the only thing that's really due under the bylaws is just the budget requests in December and then in January. Mr. Wells, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Director Provost because not only is she in her first year on this role, but she, the difficulties of COVID, handling all the COVID monies, the COVID requests, the gift of the CARES Act and ARPA coming in and processing all that and as well as dealing with level dollar budgets going in FY twenty-three. It's an exercise for me as a department head, I fully understand, but it's a very difficult thing and I've got thirty years behind me here, plus Karen, so you're in your first year. So I just want to say thank you for all you're doing. You're definitely taking a very proactive role in this and I appreciate the timeline that you've laid out here for us tonight.
I thank you so much.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Dennehy?
Yeah, very quickly, Madam Chair, uh, I, I can't stress enough the work that Karen is doing with, uh, Lynn Hoy, uh, at the, with the warrant committee and this budget module, uh, from Clergov that this, uh, select board, uh, committed to and approved thankfully, uh, will be a great step in that. Um, and I think it'll pay dividends in help, helping to shorten, uh, that timeframe when, when everything does get loaded into this and and the warrant committee will have their, this at their fingertips, uh, for this budget season. So, thank you for that.
Very good. Anything else on the budget process? All right, then. Thank you very much, Ms. Provost, for, um, the presentation tonight and for all the work that went into it. This is, this is good news.
Welcome, Madam Chair. Thank you. Thank all the departments. I, 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 um, I, I thank the departments to being cooperative and really adhering to these deadlines because we met with every single department except one. And just going over the FY twenty-two, the status, anything that may be unforeseen that's going to come up. So I really appreciate the work of departments, the work of my staff and members, you know, especially, um, the payroll clerks and putting all the salaries and time and attention, time and attendance together. It's a lot of work I've been doing. So I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it by myself. So I thank them.
Thank you. And thanks for your patience this evening. Let me ask Mr. Dennehy, um, number sixteen, the hazardous mitigation plan, do we get any more information on that? Is that ready for this evening?
So that, that is not, uh, we're going to defer that if you don't mind, Madam Chair. There is a January first deadline on that, so, um, the December twenty-second agenda would be perfect. Thank you.
Okay, in that case, then I, I'm going to ask the board for items sixteen and seventeen. Seventeen is, uh, we received a request that, to support, um, to issue a letter supporting proposed legislation for the school meal legislation and Mr. Dennehy has notified the school committee of this and we, or the school department about this and we want to follow it up with the school committee and put that back on a future agenda. So if there's no objection, we'll defer items sixteen, seventeen, and actually eighteen. Eighteen is the, um, animal shelter contract, which unfortunately is not back to town council yet from the other side, so. Helps us eliminate a few things on the agenda and those will all be on future agendas, hopefully on the twenty-second. Item nineteen, we now have a series of approvals of common vic, uh, liquor licenses and entertainment licenses. So.
I'm ready to go with you first one to help you out there, Madam Chair, if you are ready.
Okay, common vic.
So this would be item twenty-two, correct? I make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two common victory license renewal. I'm just going to unmute myself. Did I, am I muted? I don't know if I may have a mute. Okay, the common, common victory license renewals for five fifty-six Adam Street, LLC DBA Navara, B and D Ichiro Inc., DBA Ichiro Sushi, Carbo Coffee, DBA Kitchens, uh, excuse me, Brugers Bagel Bakery, Coffee Break Cafe Inc., Ho Jam Inc., DBA Mr. Chan's, K and K kitchens, et cetera, LLC DBA Pawn View Pavilion, Milton. Is that, is that a typo, Milt Dunn? Or is that really a place?
It's Milt Dunn. It's the Dunkin' Donuts name.
Oh, Milt Dunn, okay. LLC DBA Dunkin' Donuts, Milton Fuller Housing Corp., DBA Fuller Village at two locations, Milton Obus LLC, DBA Steel and Rye Restaurant. I'm reading off of my phone tonight, my other computer would come back up. Peel Pizza, PB Milton, LLC DBA Player, Wools Revival Company, Spellbound, Inc., DBA Milton House and Pizza, Starbucks Coffee, number seven five six five Stella's on Jeanette, Stevie's The Plate, Plate at Milton Marketplace, Welsh Restaurant Management, LLC DBA Abbey Park, eighty-eight Wharf Hospitality, LBA DBA Badre Osteria.
All right, we have a second. Mr. Zulus?
Second and a friendly amendment, uh, Mr. Wells?
Absolutely. I, I may, I was reading fast, I apologize.
Yeah, it's fine. Coffee Break Cafe, I think, is subject to the, uh, certificate of good standing.
Okay, I'll accept that, Madam Chair.
Okay. And you, Mr. Zulus seconded the motion, so all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Liquor licenses.
I move to approve twenty-twenty-two liquor license renewals contingent upon the receipt of all necessary certificates required by chapter three oh four of the Acts of two thousand and four, signed by the building inspector and the fire department as follows. American Legion Post one fourteen, uh, one twenty-three Granite Avenue Veterans Club License, Wallston Golf Club, nine 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 Randolph Avenue Club License, NPP Inc., doing business as Central Liquor Mart, twenty-six Central Ave Retail Package Store License, Delaney Liquors Inc., doing business as East Milton Wine and Spirits Inc., three sixty-eight Granite Avenue Retail Package Store License, Craft and Crude, twenty-five Central Ave Retail Package Store License, The Fruit Center Inc., ten Bassett Street Retail Package Store License, Milton Fuller Housing Corp., thirteen ninety-nine Blue Hill Ave Restaurant License, Milton Fuller Housing Corporation, thirteen seventy-two Brushhill Road Restaurant License, eighty Wharf Hospitality LLC, doing business as Madre Osteria, eighty War Street Restaurant License, Welch Restaurant Management LLC, doing business as Abbey Park, five fifty Adam Street Rest Restaurant License, Milton Opus LLC, doing business as Steel and Rye, ninety-five Elliott Street Restaurant License, Ho John Inc., doing business as Mr. Chan's, five three four Adam Street Restaurant License, five fifty-six Adam Street LLC, doing business as Navara, five fifty-six Adam Street Restaurant License, Lombardi Enterprises LLC, doing business as The Plate at Milton Marketplace Restaurant License, uh, B and D Ichiro Inc., doing business as Ichiro Sou- Sushi, five three eight eight Adam Street Restaurant License, wine and beer only.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Richard.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Entertainment licenses.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve twenty-twenty-two's, oh, this is.
No, well, let's do Sunday.
Yeah, I was going to do Sundays. Okay, twenty, that's what I was reading, I think. Twenty-twenty-two, Sunday opening permits for Delaney Liquors Inc., DBA East Milton Wine and Spirits Inc., Craft and Crude, NPP Inc., DBA Central, uh, Central Liquor Mart and The Fruit Center Incorporated.
Okay, and I think we just want to add that the hours for all of them would be ten.
Okay, it's, I'm reading off, so I don't have that there. So I'll, I'll accept that if you just want to read them off.
Okay. Yeah, that, so that's the friendly amendment, just the hours, ten AM to six PM.
I'll accept that.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Item twenty-two, entertainment licenses.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the following, two thousand twenty-two entertainment license renewals, Milton's Opus DBA Steel and Rye, ninety-five Elliott Street, Welch Restaurant Management LLC, DBA Abbey Park, five fifty Adam Street, Wharf, uh, Street Restaurant Group LLC, DBA Madre Osteria, eighty-eight Wharf Street, five fifty-six Adam Street LLC, DBA Navara, five fifty-six Adam Street and Ho Jam Inc., DBA Mr. Chan's, five thirty-four Adam Street.
Seconded by Mr. Wells. Mr. Dennehy, did you have your hand raised for a point on this?
Uh, just at, at the discussion point, Madam Chair.
Yes, the motion's made and seconded, so what?
Oh, I would, I would just like to thank Sue Bridges. Um, weekly, we get to see all the great work that's been, been, uh, carried out by Lyndon Appleby. Um, Sue Bridges is one of the, uh, newest employees in town government, Milton, and as much as you have to read this evening for these four agenda items, uh, there is an, an idiosyncratic amount of work done. Um, and the businesses in the community are very good at getting this stuff back to her, but an exemplary amount of work done by Sue Bridges to get it to this point, understanding she's been with the town for two months. So, um, very attention to detour oriented, and I'd like to thank Sue for all of her hard work getting this accomplished.
And I'll echo that on behalf of the board. Thank you to Sue for all of the effort. Okay, motion's made and seconded. So all in favor of the entertainment licenses, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, um, why don't we go on to item twenty-three, which is the fire station building, because I see that the chief is still here. Um, I'm going to be recused on this. This is an amendment to a contract and, um, we have to go back to COVID, so we'll do that as soon as we come back from, as soon as we finish this item. So, so I'll ask Arthur to be the acting chair for this item. Thank you, Arthur.
You're welcome, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Wells is the, uh, representative to the fire station building committee. Would you want to introduce this topic?
I think we're going to bring Dan Clark in in place of, uh, Mr. Walsh.
I'm looking to see him here. Um, Brian Walsh cannot join us, uh, tonight. Unfortunately, he has, however, submitted a memorandum on this that we can enter into the record.
Can we promote Dan, uh, Mike, can you promote Dan Clark into this, to the attendee group?
Mr. Clark was on the call before we went to executive session. I did not see him return.
All right, let me text him.
Yeah, just, uh, very briefly, we had a, we had a conversation with town council yesterday, if I may, Madam Chair, or, uh,
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, we, we coordinated a phone call yesterday with, uh, town council, uh, to go over, um, this. Uh, this has been drafted by, uh, uh, context, um, who's our architects. This would be the third amendment to this contract, uh, the need to do a, uh, traffic study, if you will. Yeah, in the area of, of, of four thirty-two Adam Street, uh, understanding that we, we did, um, Public Works performed one, uh, through the Mastard, a potential contract for traffic signalization at the intersection of Adam Street and Squonham Street, but, um, better judgment would have, being this, you know, at least a half a block up the street and being a fire station, that would be prudent to, uh, do a separate traffic study uh, to accomplish, um, the necessary, um, counts, uh, for four thirty-two Adam Street, if I summarize that correctly.
You did, and as Mr. Walsh indicated, um, that Squonham Street, Adam Street study did not look at fire apparatus entering and leaving Adam Street at the new station site, uh, and that is the, the core need for the, uh, third amendment to the contract.
That's correct. But that information may assist them. I'm sure it will assist them as far as the overall ma- the, the intersection being adjacent to it. They make the work a little bit easier, but, um, it's correct. It did not anticipate this at all. I believe Mr. Clark is on the line, Mr. Dennehy. I thought I just saw him pop up.
He is now, yes. Uh, Dan? Welcome. How are you?
Good, yeah.
Would you like to further comment on the, uh, proposed amendment?
Um, just that, as Mr. Walsh was saying, or I'm sorry, Mr. Wells was saying that, um, you know, it's, it's very project specific and it's for understanding, um, exactly what safety and traffic calming measures, if any, might be needed. Um, you know, we could go the conservative route, which would be to put them in and plan for them. Um, but our committee thought it made a lot more sense to actually do the study and understand it. Um, because if you don't need to have a, you know, a flashing yellow light there, for example, it would be, I think, you know, better to know that through the traffic study. It's also something that, um, you know, some of the butters had asked for and asked us to do. Um, and so I think it makes a lot of sense to move forward.
Any comments or questions from members of the board? Mr. Zulus?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So, so just a question. Um, so this is referred to as a traffic study, but then in the, in the proposal, um, this is for nineteen thousand dollars, if it's the right proposal, and it, and it says East Milton roadway, roadway and signalization design. And then there's a sub-bullet under that that says prepare traffic assessment. And then there's a sub-bullet under that that says Prepare Traffic Assessment Study and Signal Warrant Analysis, so is this, is this nineteen thousand dollars for just the traffic study, or is it the signalization design, or does it include the signal warrant analysis? Looking at the right thing here.
Yeah, so the answer is, yes, it does include that signal warrant analysis. I mean, that, that's one of the critical components to it, so it does include everything there. And I'm just pulling it up myself.
Yeah, so, 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 so what is that, I guess?
Which part?
Signal and warrant analysis.
Oh, so that tells you if based on traffic flows and based on how the app, it's specific to the apparatus coming out, if you need a flashing light. Or an emergency light that, you know, would be just yellow flashing, or or if it's something that's activated by the fire department.
So Chief Madden, nodding in the affirmative, Chief, would you like to comment yourself? Are you satisfied with what has been said?
Yeah, that was my understanding of it, is that basically it's whether we need the, the traffic light to exit the property safely or not, so that's pretty much my understanding of it, you know, what Mr. Clark was saying.
Thank you, Chief Madden, any further discussion, Mr. Wells?
Just one follow-up to Mike Zulus's comment, if you recall, we, I don't know if you remember, we had a discussion on the new lights that are proposed to Squanton Adams. Part of what this will do is make sure that whatever is needed or if anything is tied, whatever signalization goes to that intersection.
That synchronization would be very important, raising that.
And the funding, the funding is from the existing appropriations that have already been made?
Correct.
No additional appropriation?
Correct, it's within our current town meeting approved budgets.
With no further discussion, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the nineteen thousand dollars for this amendment to the context contract.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion that has been made and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes.
Nice job, Mr. Vice Chair.
And thank you, Chief Madden. And thank you, members of the board, for your comments and contributions, and also thanks to Mr. Walsh for weighing in earlier, and we regret that family circumstances did not allow him to be with us this evening. Thank you for coming back, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Night, everyone, thank you. Why don't we go back to the COVID item, which was number twelve, and I think Mr. Dennehy is going to give Ms. Cancel's update for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. There with me one second here as I pull up her sheet, so Ms. Felton was correct. The COVID numbers in Milton are, are starting to grow. Milton had eighty-one cases in the past two weeks, up from seventy-two cases the week previously. And to put that in perspective, over the past five days, we've had fifty-one cases in Milton, including seventeen cases yesterday alone. Ms. Felton, again, is correct that her positivity rate is higher at two point three seven. Many of you may have seen the, over the weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, over eleven thousand positive cases in the state, and a positivity rate over four and a half percent. Myself and DPW Director Chase Berkeley are following the MWRA Bio Bot data, and it's at an all-time high, so, again, the virus is in our community. The Health Department is, is, is doing everything they can from a testing perspective. The town has scheduled and confirmed two future free drive-through COVID test days. Sunday, December nineteenth, which is the Sunday before Christmas, and Sunday, December twenty-sixth, which is the Sunday after Christmas. It's free, it's drive-through, all are welcome, Public Works Yard, six twenty-nine Randolph Ave, from ten AM to three PM. We'll be publicizing that as we go forward. Again, Ms. Felton talked about vaccination, we, the latest statistics as of December second does have seventy, seventy-one percent of our town's population over the age of twelve fully vaccinated. The Health Department today continued the second week of their three-week vaccination program. Initially set up COVID nineteen Moderna boost, booster doses for the first three weeks, both on Wednesday and Thursday of last week, this week and next week. These dates have all been filled, and additional dates will be posted on the Town of Milton's website. Director Canceler is just waiting for an update from the state as to when they will receive and how many booster vaccines they will receive. But there will be future booster vaccination taking place at Milton Town Hall, so. In all, after next week, and these appointments have been booked, there'll be over eight hundred booster vaccines that will have been administered by, by town government, so. Again, the virus is in our community. And I'll open up to any questions or discussion on this matter.
Okay, see Mr. Wells and then Mr. Doyle.
Arthur, go ahead first, go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up on Ms. Felton's comments and Mr. Dennehy's simulation to that. If I remember correctly, Mr. Dennehy, we saw that there were five COVID cases in ICU at Milton Beth Israel. Is that proper?
Yes, that, that's correct. She did add that the, the Emergency Department is overwhelmed with more than fifty cases a day. Many people are flocking to the Emergency Department to test for cold symptoms. But there, there are people, five people in intensive care, one on a ventilator, and all ICU patients do not have the COVID nineteen, but there are sixteen inpatients currently. So, a very busy place up at, at Milton BID.
In those cases, in ICU were unvaccinated, is that correct?
That is my understanding, yep, I do not believe those to be breakthrough cases.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I just, just one comment that Ms. Felton did make about Dr. enough, I think that, you know, Health Department, our board, everyone, Health Board have done yeoman's work. Even the state, every signboard, everything, get your vaccine, get you. And we hear it all the time, bind arms to stick it, stick a needle in them. I think the important thing is the booster, I think we know that it's the majority of these breakthroughs become the eight-month life cycle, most of these is ended, so I think the more people we get to be vaccinated, the better off we are, it just right that critical point right now, which is why it was just a year ago now that first frontline people were getting their boosters, and now you see the difference a year later, so it's very important, so. I just don't want to say thank you to Karen and them, they're doing a really good job. I'm, I'm, my last point. Is the Board of Health, or are we having Fallon, or anyone taking out boosters to people who can't get into either a drugstore, or, or one of our clinics, or one of the regional clinics? Do you know the answer to that, Michael?
I don't know if they have enough doses to do that, Richard, at this time.
I know that they have, I mean, and I, I think it was for seniors, but I don't know the extent of it, so there was some of it anyway, I don't know if it's still going on, but they did do some of it.
I think that's an important thing to do.
They went to some homes, and I think it was mainly elderly.
I think if we can get it, I think that's one thing, I think Fallon, Richard, can help you with that, they have a contract, I think whatever seniors we can get them out to, because they're the most vulnerable, as far as getting those boosters. That's all I had, really, so thank you, and thank everyone for working so hard on this. It's not over yet.
No, it's not, Mr. Doyle?
I just wanted to follow up, Mr. Dennehy's reference to Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center and acknowledge the work that they do is, is part of this very important undertaking with respect to the public health of the community and beyond the community. And also note that we see this uptick on the post Thanksgiving celebration, travel. And we have travel coming up for Christmas and for the New Year, and diligence is going to be very important in preparation for what might be faced in the two to three weeks after those two very important events would be warranted.
I, I, I think there's no question that an awful lot has been done by the Board of Appeals, by this, not Board of Appeals, the Board of Health, this board.
They did too.
And they probably did too, and in the town management, the Health Department, and everyone, but, you know, we, we talked with the Board of Health, or the Health Director several months ago, when when we wanted to explore whether they were considering a mask mandate for Town Hall, and that's still in effect. The city of Boston has a mask mandate, and has had for a number of months. And with the growing numbers, I think it would at least be worth bringing to the Board of Health's attention the, the comments that Deborah Felton made this evening about a mask mandate, and whether that should be considered for the town in light of the growing numbers, and the the wastewater testing that Mr. Dennehy referenced that was on the news earlier today. So, if it's the sense of the board, I think we should ask Mr. Dennehy to communicate that to Caroline Canceler and Roxanne Musto, and and ask that they take that under advisement, it is the Board of Health's role to issue. And we have discussed it with them in the past, but I think it's worth bringing Deborah Felton's comments to them, to their attention in light of recent trends. But, Mr. Zulus, and then Mr. Ms. Collins?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, it's not on the agenda for tonight, this is just for the, the update. But the question is, what, if anything, is this board going to do? We've acted in the past, the question is whether we act in light of this new information, and so, again, we don't have it on the agenda for tonight, but perhaps we should have it on the next agenda to see if this board is going to take any additional action in response to the new information.
Okay, Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I actually have been wondering if there's, excuse me, something that we could do to try to encourage people to get vaccinated. And I'm open to creative suggestions, not that we have to talk about that now, it's, it's late, but but, but anything we could do to promote that, because there are still some people who, who, I mean, seventy-one percent rate, and there are a variety of reasons for that, but, but if there's something that we could do, I'd, I'd be open to suggestions.
We do plan to have COVID as a standing agenda item again, you know, going forward, I think we've had it the last couple of meetings. But if there's anything specific as we start preparing the December twenty-second agenda, members should just notify Mr. Dennehy, we'll get it on the agenda, but is the board agreeable to at least asking that Mr. Dennehy can transmit the comments that Ms. Felton made this evening to Caroline Canceler and Roxanne Musto, and asking that the Board of Health take her comments into account? We can talk about what we may or may not want to do at, at a future meeting, but I think at least we could bring the, bring this to the attention of the Board of Health.
I am, Madam Chair.
I'm fine with that, Madam Chair, I just want to follow up on Melinda's comment for a second. As I said earlier, getting arms, needles and arms is the, that's, that's the ultimate thing. It's the critical thing you can do here, follow the science, get vaccinated. Sadly, the two cases you and I talked about recently, just two that both are vaccinated, Darrow, I mean, it's really, really critical that we really push hard to get people to get vaccinated.
Okay, some more to come at our meeting on December twenty-second, and Mr. Dennehy, if you'll communicate to Caroline Canceler, that would be helpful. All right, thank you for the report tonight. Item twenty-four, we have a charitable contribution, five hundred dollars for the First Congregational Church at Milton to the Health Department.
Timely, very timely.
Timely, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve that donation, five hundred dollars, to the Health Department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Right, item twenty-five, special town meeting, this is just really a brief update for the two articles that our boards voted to submit, I was recused on this, but I'm just reporting out that town council has drafted those articles, I think everyone has received copies of them, we'll provide them to the warrant committee. If there's anything to be discussed on that, I'll probably just recuse myself from them, since it's a building project, and I work with the town's bond council, so that would be the reason I'd be recused. I don't know that there's any reason to discuss, to discuss those this evening. The only other update would be on the citizens petition. And I believe everyone has received an email from town council. Mr. Doyle, Mr. Dennehy, and I spoke with town council about this earlier today. Mr. Fryte's view is that the, what was submitted to us is really a petition to the select board. It's a request that the select board meet with them and take certain actions, and not, it, it doesn't state anywhere that it's a request for a town meeting article, and as a result, town council is not really able to determine that all of the people who signed the petition really intended for this to be a town meeting citizens petition warrant article. Even if the lead proponent may have had that intent, it's, it's not evident from the document itself that, that the people who signed this petition would have known that they were asking for a town meeting article, as opposed to just asking our board to meet and try to resolve some of these traffic concerns. So the question for us, we voted last time to submit the article contingent upon the clerk verifying the signatures, but also town council reviewing the article and seeing if it really was proper for town meeting, and we now have his advice. So, what is the, what would the board like to do, is this something that we want to not move forward to town meeting, not move forward to town meeting? Maybe reach out, and I'd be happy to do it to the, the lead proponent, who was the person who called the town moderator. And explain to him that this really appears to be a request to the board, and it's not evident that, to town council, that all the people who signed it knew what, understood this to be a town meeting article. Mr. Wells?
Uh, thank you, Madam, I concur with you, I mean, this is more of an operational enforcement type of thing, I think that a, a discussion, and I'd be fine if you want to start with it, you might want to talk to maybe Chase and Chief King before you do it, just to get a little background, maybe some numbers, and I think that that would be probably the most prudent and responsible, and probably timely manner to get something done on this, I, I just don't think it's really what's gonna get you where it's telling me.
Okay, anyone disagree with that approach, maybe then I'll reach out to the I don't have the name written here, but I'll reach out to the man who submitted this, and had spoken about this. And then we'll put it on for discussion at the next meeting.
Thank you.
We have alerted the warrant committee to the fact that there, there may be some issues with this article.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything further on item twenty-five for the special town meeting? I don't think there's anything else on the other articles for tonight. Okay, twenty-six is that we need to create the timeline for the annual town meeting on May second, twenty twenty-two, and normally this time of year, we set the date to close the warrant. It's usually early January, our first meeting in January would be January twelfth, Wednesday. So I, I think that would be a reasonable date for us to close the warrant, even though it's probably a few days later than what we've done in the past.
Do you want that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, if you want to propose that to, is the date to close the warrant.
I'll make a motion that we close the warrant on January twelfth, twenty twenty-two, for the May second town meeting, annual town meeting.
Mr. Zulus?
Second.
Oh, okay, I thought you were, okay, so the, the, the motion then is to is to close the warrant on January twelfth, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes, that will allow us time to publicize the warrant closing deadline in Milton Times. Okay, and then, I think, we, we don't have a draft timeline yet, but we can work on that and bring that forward to a future meeting. Karen Preval actually touched on some of the, the prep dates as, as part of the budget process. Anything else in the annual town meeting? Item twenty-seven is meeting minutes for November tenth and November seventeenth, everyone had a chance to review them.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll move to accept the minutes from the select board meetings held on November ten, two thousand twenty-one, November twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, I, I did submit some minor edits to, to Lynn, if anyone else submitted any comments, but I don't know if those were recirculated, but they were pretty minor.
They weren't substantive?
No, not substantive. Okay, then all in favor of approving the minutes, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes, town administrators report.
Just one thing, Madam Chair, I just want to draw up on what Superintendent Jet said today, I have a police scanner in my office, and I listen to it frequently. The tactical and professionalism that was shown today during the Pierce lockdown by our Milton Police Department was top-notch, from, from top to bottom. Chief Deputy Jimmy O'Neil, Beth Coska, who was the sergeant, Lieutenant Cap-
Chief Deputy Jimmy O'Neill, Beth Cosco, who was the sergeant, Lieutenant Caputo, everyone that was involved. I listened to it. It was a pretty, pretty dramatic testimony as they worked their way through the building. But I cannot say enough about the operation that took place in that building today by our Milton Police Department. So, I want to thank them, as Mr. Jet had. It was, it was quite something to hear on the radio that I'm privy to, but the professionalism and just the overall, just support that they provided was tremendous.
Okay, thank you. Chair's report. I added a brief update on the billboard proposal for Two Granite Avenue. I think we've all received many emails from residents who are concerned about the proposal that was made at our recent meeting. And the idea was just to assure people, because there's been a lot of Facebook posts as well as emails, that there will be public input, there will be a public process. At our last meeting, we actually asked some questions for due diligence purposes relating to revenue, relating to the lifespan of the sign. Since that, and we also, I think it was even Mr. Corbin himself, who suggested the town administrator contact a representative from the Town of Waymouth to understand some of their experiences with the billboard. So, all of that is being done. We are getting some additional information. The Conservation Agency, Ivis, has started to look at some environmental issues because the property is right on the river, and we'll get some advice and input on those issues. And Town Council is also looking at what the process may be. Mr. Corbin indicated that he felt a variance was needed in Board of Appeals. So, Town Council is looking into what the process here would be. There would also be a state agency involved, and which comes first is something that's being considered. So, this really is just to reassure the public that there will be an opportunity for public input. We did not have any members of the public at our last meeting who wanted to weigh in. We did get many emails after that meeting. And there will be more to come on this, probably not on the twenty-second of December, given that it's, everyone will be focused on the holidays, but at one of our January meetings. So, so everyone should stay tuned, and there was, there was some indication that this may be being rushed and not enough time for consideration, and that that is not the case. In fact, by having it on our recent agenda, that was what made this very transparent and public and invited members of the public to comment and to weigh in. And that's the way the process should work for someone to bring a proposal to a board at a public meeting where everyone has an opportunity to hear the details and then weigh in. So, hopefully that reassures people that there's, there's more time to make comments at public meetings. Also wanted to just update the public on a number of committee vacancies that we have. We now have three vacancies on the recently appointed Local Historic District Committee. Excuse me. Unfortunately, we've lost some members on that committee, and we're looking to add members to that committee. We also have a vacancy on the Conservation Commission, Sign Review Committee, and the Master Plan Implementation Committee. We have received some interested applications from people who would like to serve on a couple of those committees. We've notified the Equity and Justice Committee of the vacancies. They are going to see what they can do to help us fill the committee vacancies. And my suggestion regarding the Local Historic District Committee was going to be that, since we had Ms. Collins review the applications a few months ago and propose a slate, that we may want to ask Ms. Collins to do that again for the Local Historic District Committee. Perhaps reach out to the Historic Commission, maybe the Planning Board, anyone else who has an interest in that committee, see if we can get any additional referrals if we don't have enough applications for three seats. But hopefully that the Equity and Justice Committee can help as well. And they have committed to putting the word out through their network. Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, we've finished this item. Your mentioning of the Conservation Commission causes me to ask if we could return to item twenty-five. It's just one brief comment.
Certainly, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just note with respect to items one and two, relative to the exchange of conservation land in Cala Road, that I am a member of both the Conservation Commission and the Select Board. It is my intention at this time to recuse myself from any Conservation Commission deliberations and vote on either one of those pending advice from legal counsel.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doyle. Back to item twenty-nine. Under item C, I just wanted to report out that for five eighty-two Blue Hill Avenue, which is one of the forty-B projects, the Board of Appeals had, I think, but maybe their final meeting last evening, and they are very close to approving that project for eighty-four units in two buildings, preserving the mansion and the garden. And essentially what they did last night was finalize the language subject to just, it's a fifty-five-page document, reviewing it one more time. They scheduled a meeting for next Wednesday that they said that they may cancel if not needed, but there were a couple of defined terms that they just needed to clarify that there was consistency throughout the document. So, I think it's good news that that project, which started a year ago, has had more than thirty public meetings in an exorbitant amount of time by members of the Board of Appeals, the Planning Director, Tim Zerwinski, and Bev Sutton, who works in the Building Department and works with the Board of Appeals. The panel for this is chaired by Jeff Mullen, and the members are Giselle Joffre and Frank O'Brien. And they've done yeoman's work on this application. So, looks like it's nearing the end and is about to be approved, which, you know, people may have different views on it, but the project has changed considerably from the initial proposal of one hundred and eighteen units in one very large building, no preservation of the mansion or the garden, to two units that preserves most of the mansion, not all of it, but most of it, and the garden. And is a, is, is probably, I, I think probably most people would agree, is a better project than the original project, even if it's not entirely what everyone would like to see there. So, that, that was good news to hear that at their meeting last night. They do have a draft of the decision, but they're calling the final draft on the website. Members are...
Madam Chair, just a quick, if they approve that before the thirty-first, does that count towards this year's, does that help this year's? I can't remember what it's called, the Master Housing Plan, that that be?
I'm not sure, because you have to count into time to file with the clerk in the appeal period. So, so I'm not sure the answer to that, Richard. Probably Tim Zerwinski would be able to answer that in a quick minute, but I don't know, but soon.
We have so many committees in play, I can't, I'm trying, I can't get them all. I know it's housing, the Housing Production Plan, that's it.
The SHI is what you're talking about.
I know about the SIT, but I wanted to refer to the right document. I just, I thank you, that's all I just wanted.
So, does anyone have a report this evening? Mr. Doyle?
None here, Madam Chair.
No report, Madam Chair.
Ms. Collins?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wells?
No, Madam Chair, but I will have a comment, a public comment response.
Okay, that, that is next, so public comment response.
You might have some, you're chair, you might have something from tonight. Do you have anything yourself first, you're the chair?
Yeah, I have to think back as to everyone who spoke a public comment. I don't think so. I think we've addressed the offer and the COVID comments during the meeting, so no.
I just want to, last week, you were gracious enough to let me speak in public comment about the work of my brother's keeper that takes place this, all the time, but especially at this time of year. In a matter of seven short days, this morning, I delivered nearly seventy crockpots, brand-new, to their warehouse in Eastam, and they were very gracious. Melinda and your mother, and Arthur and Susan, there were just so many people. From the day, the morning after we left our meeting, the first crockpot showed up at my door, and all week long, there was a show up with notes, and people just came through. But the thing that I want to really report is, today I had the privilege for the third year of doing my weekly deliveries for them. And my first deliveries today were in the Town of Milton. And for anyone who doesn't think that difficulty and hardship affects every community and so many families, then they have no idea. And I'm very grateful that the work that thousands, hundreds of volunteers, many of them from this community, do each and every year, not just for our community, but for communities all around us, without, without their work and their generosity. I don't know how any of these families would do it. I've been in a lot of these houses, and a lot of them have absolutely nothing. Love what comes forward in these gifts, so thank you for allowing me that time, and thank you for this again tonight. And thank you to everybody, everyone who wrote, posted, anonymously dropped at my door, everyone who tried to help with this. You know, people would never think of how important a crockpot could be to a mother who just wants to try and cook and provide for children. I had no idea when we first did this. This is like over two hundred and fifty we've donated now in two years. It's unbelievable, so thank you to everyone.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to underscore the worthwhileness of the proclamation being reaffirmed. Indeed, it is a document, but documents are very important. Not to have them is a major omission, and it's not to suggest by any means they're a substitute for inaction and improvements in many venues, but they serve as a very, very important foundation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. And I just want to follow up with what Richard mentioned. We did reach out to Maureen Dolan and the Milton Residents Fund just to see if she would like to come in. She's going to be on one of the January agendas. Did not feel that she needed to come in at this time for additional assistance, but if there are any residents who are still watching at this late hour, if there's family in need or someone who has not yet reached out to the Residents Fund, call the Select Board office, we can put you in touch with Maureen Dolan. If there's someone who needs assistance during the holidays or at any time during the year, that would be a, a place to turn for some additional help. Okay, future agenda dates. So, we're meeting on December twenty-second. We, I'm forgetting what it is for, but Mr. Denny, we need to consider adding a meeting on the seventeenth, possibly?
Yes, for the Milton's, the Milton Community Electricity Aggregation. There's a form that we have to submit now that the program has launched to allow good energy to continue their work.
Okay, so if everyone could check their calendars for the seventeenth, I believe that's a Friday, and let us know whether there's a time that works. It could be a daytime meeting. If we could let Lynn and Mike know tomorrow, we'll get that calendar. Okay.
Thank you, Madam.
At our, earlier in the evening, we continued one of the executive session items, so I'll find my notes. And we're going to move back into executive session, so I will move that we enter executive session to discuss litigation strategy with respect to potential litigation against the MBTA related to the condition of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adam Street in Milton, believing that having this discussion in an open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board. And we will not return to open session. We will adjourn from the executive session. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. We are now back in executive session. And thank you to Milton Access.